Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the June 20th, 2023 Board Meeting of the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners. If you can, please stand up and say a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First thing on our agenda is the Agenda Review.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
All right.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same, and it passes. And we will get right into planning and zoning. And I'm going—
Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen.
I've got a brief introduction here. The first item on the agenda is planning and zoning. Planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items. These are public hearings. Public comment will be allowed for just a moment, in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and there is a five-minute time limit, and the county administrator will give you a one-minute warning to let you know when you've used the allotted time. We used to have a three-minute time limit, now we have five, but I will make sure five minutes is the most. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive, are not relevant to the matter under consideration from the board. I'd ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and introduce the first item before the board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Garrett Elthing, Blue Earth County, Property and Environmental Resources. PC-08-23 is a request from Marx Farms, Inc., which is a request for review and approval of a conditional use permit to an expand in existing fee lot owned by Marx Farms, Inc. The expansion will include the construction of one additional total confinement poultry barn and a shed for storing solid manure. The new barn will house 200,000 laying hens under five pounds, which is the equivalent of 600 animal units. The expansion will increase the permitted capacity total from 145,000 laying hens to 315,000 laying hens. The property is in Blue Earth County, is zoned agricultural, and is in part of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 15, Mapleton Township. The site address is 58721 119th Street, Mapleton, Minnesota. Staff presented their report. There was no comment from the applicant, and there was no comment from the public. The planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the planning commission, by roll call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action is the passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Right. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment regarding PC-08-23, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to speak to PC-08-23? The second time, is there anybody willing, wishing to speak to PC-08-23? And for the final time, is there anyone wishing to speak to PC-08-23? If not, we will close the public comment portion. Are there any comments from the board?
I don't have any questions or comments at this time, Mr. Chair. If there's no comments, I would move approval of the passage of the resolution based on the recommendations by the planning commission.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. It passes. Would the staff please introduce the next item before the board? Please introduce yourself.
I'm George Leary, Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning. PC-12-23 is a request from Kristen and Joseph Friedrichs for review and approval of a preliminary plat of Friedrichs Farms, a replat of auditor's plat number 17. The replat will split the property into one outlot and one lot for a future land exchange. The property is in the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 27, Vernon Center Township. The location address is 13805 US Highway 169, Vernon Center, Minnesota. Staff presented the report. The applicant was not present, and there was no public comment. The planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the planning commission, by roll call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you wish to make a comment regarding PC-12-23, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the board. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC-12-23? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC-12-23? If not, we'll close the public comment portion. Are any comments from the board?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
No comments.
No comments. For me, I would move the recommendation.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Planning and zoning staff, please report PC-17-23.
Again, I am George Leary, Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning. PC-17-23 is a request from Lee and Christine Boer and the Terrace View West Co-op Association for review and approval of the preliminary plat of Terrace View Subdivision Number Two. The request is a replat of lots 12 through 15 of Terrace View Subdivision. The plat will change lots 12 through 15 into two lots and one outlot. The properties are zoned rural townsite and are located in the urban fringe overlay district of the city of Mankato. The properties are in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 4, Decoria Township. Staff presented the report. That was represented. There was no comment from the public. The planning commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the planning commission, by roll call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you would like to make a comment regarding PC-17-23, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to comment and speak on PC-17-23? The second time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC-17-23? And for the last time, anyone wishing to comment on PC-17-23? If not, we will close the public comment portion. Are there any comments from the board?
One minute, Mr. Chair.
Not, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I would move approval of the passage of the resolution based on the recommendations of the planning commission.
I'll second it.
All right. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. It passes. Staff have a recommending— Staff, could you please read PC-19-23 and please introduce yourself?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Scott Salzberg with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning. PC-19-23 is a request from Paradise Valley Trust and W. Lorenz Construction as a request for review and approval of an interim use permit for an aggregate mine and associated accessory uses. It's located in the southeast quarter of Section 6, Rapidan Township. An access to the gravel mine is proposed from County State Highway 9 and Section 7 of Rapidan Township. At the planning commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicants were present and available for questions. Eight individuals addressed the planning commission, and the following list includes the concerns that were expressed, and they include the potential for water contamination, potential for well water contamination, impacts to wildlife, increased truck and traffic associated noise, concern that explosives would be used, hours of operation, the negative impact on the county park, tracking of gravel and dust on the County State Highway 9, the fear that the recollection area will create the potential for increases in mosquitoes, suggestions that the reclaimed pit be brought up to the existing grade, impacts on those that work at night and were trying to sleep during the day, impact to those using the bike trail, inability to walk on the road during hauling hours, and then the current speed limit is currently not observed, we're concerned about that, impacts to property values, and then groundwater contamination due to leaking fuel tanks. Quick notes on a couple of those with truck traffic, there would be 50 trucks entering and leaving the site today, so 100 trucks total per day when it's in its busiest use, and there would probably be about three, three to four employees per day, so about eight trips for there, so 108 trips to and from the site per day. The mine itself is proposed to go down 45 feet to an elevation of 820. The applicants are not proposing any dewatering, which means if there's water that they encounter, they're not proposing to pump that out. We have had pits in the past that have had to pump water out, so there would not be any pumping of water from the pit into the river or intermittent stream. The planning commission discussed several of the concerns that were addressed, and initially there was a motion made to recommend denial of the request to the county board based on non-compliance with the land use plan, that would be taking agricultural land out of production. The motion failed on a vote of three to four. Following that, a motion was then made to recommend the approval of the request to the county board, adopting the findings and conditions listed in the staff report. The motion was seconded and voted in favor of at four to three, with three being opposed. Since the planning commission meeting, actually yesterday, the applicant notified us that they got a petition for an environmental assessment worksheet, and that goes to the Environmental Quality Board for review, and typically they have five days to review that petition and determine whether an EAW or environmental assessment worksheet should be, or forwarded to the local government. It's likely that we would be the responsible governmental unit that would make the determination on whether an EAW would be required or not, and if that's the case, we would have 30 days to make that decision after we're notified by the Environmental Quality Board, if we are selected as the regulating, responsible governmental unit. Based on that, staff is recommending that the item be tabled so that that process, the EAW petition process, can be properly worked through and reviewed about whether an EAW would then be required.
Staff have recommended tabling the item until the Environmental Quality Board reviews the petition. Is there a motion to table this item until further notice? Mr. Chair, due to the environmental assessment worksheet petition being submitted to the Environmental Quality Board, or EQB, I would move to table the board's decision-making process as required by Minnesota Rule 4410.3100. I feel this motion to table allows the EAW petition review process to be properly conducted. And a second?
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? I guess I got the one question. I think it's important that we have, who was on the agenda, that we hear from the public on this. Now with this petition, there will be other opportunities for input, but as we work through this process, the earlier we get the input, the better it is for everyone, so I would encourage us to continue with, so even though that, if this passes, and I'm not sure if appropriate is to vote before or after public comment, but I would, hopefully would have public comment today as well. I plan on having public comment either way. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. And that passes. The issue's been tabled, but since there are interested parties in the room, you are welcome to share your comments at this time if you choose. It should be noted, there will be further public comments, opportunities before the county board makes its decision. If you would like to make a comment regarding PC-19-23, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Remember, there's a five-minute limit, and at one minute, the county administrator will give you a warning when you have one minute left. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC-19-23? Please come to the podium, state your name.
My name is Jean Fortune, and I understand that the county has contracted before with Lorenz Construction, and I was wondering if the location of the gravel mining is related to the further work that will be done on the Rapidan dam removal or reconstruction.
This is a public comment portion. Not a question and answer, but you can get a hold of the planning and zoning and ask that question to them. Personally, I don't know, I don't— But that's, like I said, this is a public comment portion. Thank you. We will, we will get your answer, though. Yes? Please come up to the podium.
Name and address. Thank you. My name is Joe Bromland. I'm an attorney in Mankato with Bromland Law LLC. The address is 125 St. Andrews Court, Suite 221, Mankato, Minnesota, 56001. I'm here representing a number of folks who are opposed to this project. Those folks are Tammy and John Mesa, Jeff and Jerry Hickok, Mark and Krista Crush, Gwen and Todd Walters, the folks who own and operate the Dam Store, which would be Jenny and Mark Barnes, David and Jim Hureska, and also Roger and Monica Granis, Bob Deesh, Carrie and Cassie Peterson, Mary West and Brian Trios, Keith Mann, and Jeremy and Alice Jordan. In light of the fact that this petition has been tabled at this time, I'm not going to go into all of what I was going to talk about today, and I know I only have five minutes, but there just were a couple of procedural or legalities I wanted to discuss here, and I know Mr. McDermott is fully aware of the 60-day rule and so forth, but I was just retained basically mid to late week, last week, and my clients have had very little time to really mount their opposition to this project, and they're very opposed to it. This is a very unpopular proposal down around Rapidan. We did get a petition put together, filed with the EQB, as was mentioned previously, but given the very short period of time we had to do that, there's always a chance that the EQB may look at it and say it doesn't meet all of the requirements for a petition, in which case we would correct whatever needs to be corrected and submit another one. But this petition got over 100 signatures in about a 24-hour period. I think it's over 500 now. But what we're requesting is, you know, this board does not have to wait for the EQB to make a decision as to whether to forward this to the county. The county can make a decision to order an environmental assessment worksheet now, just based on a finding that the project may have the potential for significant environmental effects. And, you know, I think, reviewing the planning commission reports, I think everyone can identify what those effects may be. So our request would be the county not wait for the state to forward anything. I think it's clear that the county board is the responsible governmental unit, and just order that an environmental assessment worksheet be completed now. There's many benefits of the environmental assessment worksheet, not the least of which is the— Once it's prepared, it's circulated to the public for review and comment. And so I think that process, that review and comment process, is probably the best way to get really meaningful and organized public feedback as far as this project. As you can see, there are many people here who, I assume, are opposed to this project, not only my clients, but others. And I do want to just—I think in conjunction with that, I don't really know where the county is on the 60-day rule as far as the approval, but all the county would have to do to extend that would be to send a written notice to the applicant, just stating the reasons for this, for a 60-day extension, or up to a 60-day extension. And I think the reasons are, it doesn't have to be— The reasons do not have to be extenuating circumstances, you just have to state the reasons in the letter. And I think the preparation of an EAW would be more than sufficient to justify a 60-day extension, because if the 60-day rule were missed for some reason, then it would just be approved as applied for. So we think that's important. I don't know how much time I have left.
One minute.
One minute. I, I'm not going to go into everything I wanted to say, but I just wanted, I spent my client's money to print some things out, and I just wanted to—the county, this is a blow-up of the, of an official brochure that the county publishes for Rapidan Dam Park. The county leverages this park as not only a quality of life issue for the residents of Blue Earth County, but also as a tourism draw. And it stated down here, "This stretch of river is one of the most natural and scenic areas in southern Minnesota, including views of rock plus wooded hills, rapids and waterfalls on side streams. It is largely undisturbed remnants of the big woods of southern Minnesota. Part of the land is used as a canoe launch while the last regains and develops conservation land. Ideal for fishing, hiking, primitive camping." The brochure also leverages the Red Jacket Trail.
Time is up.
Well, I think we understand the concerns here, and I appreciate your clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak? Please state your name and address.
My name's Brian Trios, 54097 Glacier Road. I live right across from the Dam Store. And my issues that I'm concerned about for the neighborhood are water issues. When you look at the well depths of many of the neighbors I have, my well is at 217 feet. I have some neighbors that are 125, 150, up to 200. If they take this much cubic yardage and pressure off the ground, that's going to change the water table, it's going to change the flow. What's going to happen to our wells? If there are—if we lose water, or if we lose water pressure, or if there's contamination from this mining, who is going to be the responsible party? And I asked this at the planning council, and I talked to Mr. Brunder on the phone, and I talked to Mr. Salzberg. Who is the responsible party to re-drill all these wells that will have to be done if there is contamination or if we have a loss of water? And I never got an answer from anybody. I was told the DNR is in charge of the water, but you have to call them if there's an issue. But nobody told me who is the responsible party for any of this. I just stuck a great amount of money into my land, my, my two properties that I own right there, for my retirement in two years. I can't afford to drill another well, and I'm sure most of these other people that are close to retirement age can't afford to drill it either. But I want to know, who is the responsible party if this has to be done? Now, I also found out from Mr. Salzberg, when I talked to him Friday, that in their application, they put in to do crushing of concrete and asphalt. My understanding was when this was put in, it was just to be a dugout pit for the sand and gravel. When I talked to him about it, he said—I asked him, who is, who is monitoring this, and who is the one who goes through and checks and makes sure that what's coming in isn't contaminated? He said, "Nobody. The county inspects the pit one time a year. Nobody monitors anything, nobody handles or keeps track of what's going in and out." So that's like giving somebody a free rein to do whatever for a year. So where's the oversight, and where, where is the answers going to come from? Because everybody seems to be passing the buck back and forth, and nobody's giving a direct answer. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment?
My name is Jeff Hickok. I reside at 18760 541st Lane. If you walk out of the front door of the Dam Store, walk about a block and a half, you'll be on my property. While I appreciate the five minutes we're given here today to give our input, it's kind of in lieu of what could be a 20-year sentence of listening—I don't have a five-minute timer where I can shut off the 20 years of noise that we're up against here. I'm going to ask that I might be able to read something of a brother that is a—in a position in the, in the city of Fridley, that deals with this type of thing all, all day long. He couldn't be here today, but he did give me a quick little thing to read, and I do apologize to everybody. I'm not a reader, I'm not a public person at all, so again, if you'll put up with, with my stumbling through this for the next five minutes, I would appreciate it. His response to this proposal is, "Thank you for the opportunity to review the proposal that has been prepared by the applicant for the Paradise Lorenz Construction proposal. Overall, the analysis as associated narrative was very well done. There are some areas, however, that the proposal lacks. These areas should be considered before final approval. The items included wear and tear on roadways, historic tribal consideration, time and excavation level which the crushing operations can begin, and the length, purpose in the interim use. This report will take each item in order and state and explain why inclusion of these items is so important. There's some irony in the Lorenz Construction. It's a large-scale construction company that is well-respected and whose focus in part is building quality, long-lasting roadways. Here is some irony exist, however, in the noise impact of the roadways from the hauling was carefully considered and matched against the sound guidelines. That part is very good and necessary. It is important to note that the 100 trips that's referred to is a peak number. That means the peak of what was measured. That does not mean that you can and will only expect 100 daily trips. The number was referred to in peak trips reference, not total trips. Now, considering that the outbound trucks, if a dump truck could be loaded, is 36 tons, or 72,000 pounds, the municipal public works director will tell you that the degradation of a roadway and the life expectancy of that roadway itself will be cut short due to those big, heavy trucks. Who is going to fix the road? Should it be on the taxpayers to fix that road, or should it be on the party that's causing this issue? I would vote that it would be on the Lorenz, it would be. And there, there needs to be some sort of a thing in place, because that will absolutely ruin our roadways there. And it's not us taxpayers that are doing the majority of that damage, it's these big, heavy trucks that are going to be on that road. Another thing to take into consideration is the tribal consideration. The report discusses archaeological analysis that conclude that there will be no significant impact to archaeology. I do believe, if invited, local tribes would have history in this area. The intended excavation in the northwest corner will be just the edge of the consideration given, but there should have been a report done, and we'd like to see the results of this report, just to see what, what has been the find in that area. We have had neighbors that have found— We have had neighbors that have found Indian artifacts there, and it could very well be more there than what is on the surface. Again, I appreciate the time and am hoping that we can come to a good result of this where we don't have 20 years of listening to this noise.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1923?
My name is Krista Crush. I live at 54088 Grapevine Lane, my husband Mark and I. And I agree with all of the negative impacts that have already been stated thus far. I specifically would like to address our concern with traffic, especially at the intersection of Grapevine Lane, where we live, and County Road 9. Those of us that live on Grapevine Lane in our rural community know that this intersection is already dangerous. It does not, it is a T intersection, and it is not perpendicular to County Road 9. So when you come to a stop on Grapevine, you need to literally look back over your shoulder. That compounded with the blind corner that is just down the road gives you just seconds to respond to an oncoming car from the west. So today, the proposal was upward of 100 trucks, added to that traffic that already exists in our community. So again, then we also have to add the outgoing trucks as well to that. So, and the intersection of Grapevine Lane, the entrance to the gravel pit would be almost directly across from that. So it does add a considerable concern to that. We would like to know what safeguards would be able to be added to that to make this a safe intersection for all of our community that lives off of Grapevine Lane. And we'd like you to consider that as you are considering this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1923?
I would, sir. I'm sorry. I'm Becky Brooks. I live at 23700 Third Avenue, north of town, but I ride my bike on 9, on County Road 9, past the dam store, literally hundreds of times, thousands over the years. And I live on Third Avenue, so I'm very familiar with gravel truck traffic and how dangerous it is. And as the lawyer also mentioned, the dam store itself and that road is a big tourist draw. I can't tell you how many times I've stopped, been stopped to help someone from out of town who's cycling in the area and ask for directions, or trying to find the Red Jacket Trail again from being out on County Road 9. So I do think it's a huge tourist destination, and the safety of all the hundreds of cyclists and thousands, couple thousand just on the River Valley, or the, the event in October, it's not River Valley 100, but River Ramble, thank you. And so I do think that that draw is a big consideration. Also, one last comment, this is anecdotal that I have to say, I find it very ironic that the company requesting to make this gravel pit calls it itself Paradise Valley, when that might be destroyed if it comes to play. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Tammy Massa. I live at 54105 Glacier Road, Mankato, which is right across from the proposed lot, we're about a quarter mile from there. Neighbors of the proposed aggregate mine have rights to clean air, clean water, safe roads, a quiet neighborhood, and a reliance on stable property values. Numerous studies show that this type of mining dramatically decreases property values for miles around. Values drop from 5% as far as three miles away, and as much as 35% within a half mile. My house is a quarter mile, so it could go from 400,000 down to 280,000 for property value. That's a concern for all of us. As Joe mentioned, last five days, we've had over 500 signatures on the petition. Those 500 people oppose it as well. They have a lot of conversations as this was getting signed. They don't feel that this is a conducive area for an aggregate mine to be added. This many people can't be wrong. It's a lot of people. We've only had roughly two weeks to do any due diligence to determine the detrimental impact that this could cause. If the aggregate mine does get approved, which we hope it will not, we hope that you vote no, then we need the county to look at revising the permit. We'd want berm's much taller than the tallest equipment, as many of our properties are at a higher elevation than that location. Crushing of the recycled materials and concrete, we'd like to see that completely removed due to the noise concerns, respirable crystalline silica, and the concern of our water being contaminated with potential toxic and hazardous waste, because we don't know what's coming in there to be crushed. We'd like to see that five-year permit down to a one-year permit, so we can assess compliance and any concerns sooner rather than later. Seven to five on Monday through Friday, not till 7:00 PM. We all like to enjoy our property. We like to sit outside, grill, we have neighbors over. We have a large residential area. No Saturday hours, absolutely not. I ask that you vote no for the aggregate, no for the aggregate mine, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1923?
Good morning. Robert Dish, 53836 188th Street. Most of my concerns I wrote down this morning have been addressed, but there's a few I would like to add to the list. Number one, just a little history, as a young boy, I grew up beside a gravel pit for eight years. So I understand what the impact of this is, until our family moved to where we live now. Concern I have is for actually the Nelson family. If this does go through, I think there should be some stipulations by the board put in to require a six-foot fence all the way around this gravel pit. You may ask why? Gravel pits, there's two types of gravel pits. There's one that has water in it, and there's one that's going to have water in it. That water is a draw for younger people, they want to play, they want to swim. The problem with that is it's typically an artesian, which means it's very cold water, and people will get in, play, and drown. And you can look at Hennecker Pond here in Mankato, how many times has that happened? You can even look at the Rapid Ant Dam, the river. Unfortunately, living there for the last 50 years, how many people have lost their life in Davis Hole? You've got to somehow stop the public access to this pit if it's actually going to go through. One way would be the fence. Another person addressed the water. So there's a basin that they've proposed to collect the water and any, any of the thing that comes, were off of the trucks that are entering and leaving the location of the mine. That is designed to go into a basin pit, and then it's, from the pit, it's supposed to be flushed out through, like what they determine as an intermittent stream. That stream is on my property. It's not intermittent, if we get rain, it runs. So everything that runs off of those trucks and goes into that pond will go, from that pond, right into the creek that goes through my property, that dumps directly into the Blue Earth River. That, that water should be detained and pumped out and handled as a hazardous waste. It should not be allowed to dump into the environment. And lastly, I think there's more information should be provided about the do-not-disturb area that has been, to my, in my opinion, covered up quite well through this entire thing. Explain what it is, I'm sure there's studies, let's see them, tell us what's, what's actually in that ground, so we all as a, a community can make an informed decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1923?
My name is John Massa. I live at 54105 Glacier Road. I spoke at the planning commission meeting. One thing that I mentioned is this proposal has three strikes against it right now. You've got the county campground right there, you have the county park right off the county road, and you have 30-plus homes in the immediate area in rural subdivision. One of the things that was a concern that I brought up, and I haven't heard anything, is how it could be remedied, is all along County Road 9 and that stretch, it's curb and gutter. There's 27 catch basins on the east and west side of the bridge. On the west side, it's just a short distance until the entrance to the gravel pit. Think of a catch basin as a sink. You wash your hands, a lot of times out of sight, out of mind. That's not the case here. All those catch basins drain directly to the reservoir. Also, on the deck of the dam, there are 16 catch basins. You walk on the, the bridge, you look down through a catch basin, you see water directly below you. What is going to be used to mitigate this? They claim if there's spillage off the trucks, that they'll go out and clean it up. Who and when? If you have one good rain, after trucks have been hauling, all that water, all that silt will go into the reservoir. Everybody complains about water quality or improving water quality. There is no faster way to impair water than to have water coming off a construction site or haul zone going into a body of water. Also, that, that area that Bob Dish had mentioned, it's under Figure 5 on the ISG topographic map. It is a no disturbance area. What is it? It's only on one page, there's no scale, it don't tell you anything about it or what's under there. We would like to know. If it's of question, then let's get it taken care of. Also, the, I feel that noise study is flawed. I have sold Class 8 trucks in my past, and that involves your larger dump trucks, tandem, triaxle, quads, quints, end dumps, side dumps, belly dumps, you name it. There is nothing quiet about a Class 8 truck. When trucks come down from the east, they'll be coming down a grade, across the bridge, in the River Valley, and most of them will probably be utilizing their engine brake or a Jake brake. There is nothing to mitigate that sound, and you'll hear it up and down the River Valley. And if these hours are in play for the hauling from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that's 12 hours that we get to listen to truck traffic up and down this grade, not to mention the Saturday hours, 7:00 AM to noon. I ask that we please consider that this either be shelled, or there's greater restrictions put on it, because as a person that lives in this neighborhood, this is a 20-year commitment that I have to listen to all this noise. One more thing I have is, I talked to a person that was opposed to the Jordan Sands Pit some years back. They had a lot to say about what mining involves, and one thing that came up in our discussion was the fact that the, the DNR had provided funds for this campground. My question is, is in this planning mission, commission meeting, it was stated that the DNR basically had signed off or approved that this, this gravel pit could go in there. My question is, is who signed off on the DNR? And if that document is available, would like to see it, to see how they approved something after they gave funding for this park as a rustic campground. And the only thing they said is they signed off on it. Would like to see names of who these DNR individuals are and, and why they approved as such. Appreciate your time, hope this can, issue can be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good morning. My name is David Burr. I live at 54006 188th Street, Mankato, Minnesota, 56001. I have lived here since 1958. I, whenever talking to people, I've been in sales all my life, telling them we grew up in Shangri-La, because it is. And hence their name, Peaceful Valley, it truly is. But I was relieved to hear that you're going to table it, and I think we must exude great caution. And when I look at our neighboring counties, Martin, Cottonwood, the declination, the revocation of permits with this very company, I, I think we need to do as many studies as possible. I know DNR, with water levels, through their DNR agriculture department, provide the counties with this information that's necessary, because they know counties can't have staffs for that. And I do also concur with the attorney in calling you to approve the worksheet today, because it impacts so many people in so many ways, and it's our right as citizens, and that's why the state attorney general was involved with revoking their license, not because they were abiding by the rules, it's because they weren't. And I think with that, we're owed that, you know, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on PC 1923? Excuse me.
My name is Roger Granis. I live at 5309, 019 Grapevine Lane. Monica and I, we've lived down, I've lived down there for 80, 79 years, and it's called Peaceful Valley. And by going maybe last, I don't know, I get to make mine real short. I've lived in two different locations, the last one, 41 years. The only thing I've had to do to my well is switch it from a stroke pump to a submersible. In 41 years, I've never had a bit of problem with it. Otherwise, I agree with everything everybody else has said. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm Brittany Smith. I live at 19234 540th Avenue, and we just moved there at the end of April, so kind of a shock coming into it. But I wanted to address three main points. First, I wanted to consider the Blue Earth County's land use plan and the survey that they did as part of that. So according to the plan, as part of the county's vision, is provide a high quality of life for its residents, which focuses on natural resource protection and recreational opportunities. One of the objectives of the land use plan is to preserve the scenic and recreational value of the area. That includes river corridors and the parks. The proposed mine is in a conservation zone, which is intended to protect environmentally sensitive areas, preserve ground cover, and conserve those natural resources. This area is also adjacent to the county park, which everyone has kind of mentioned already. The survey that was conducted as part of the land use plan is available online, so I'm not going to go through all of the details, but there are some points related to the issue that's being discussed here. The majority of respondents who were surveyed said that they value the county's natural scenery and resources. They believe that air and water quality are areas for improvement in the county, and outdoor activities ranked high in the reasons for why they chose to live in Blue Earth County. When asked about the importance of mining, most respondents selected not important, while emphasizing the importance of maintaining open spaces, protecting parks, rivers, streams, wooded areas. And a significant proportion of respondents also expressed the view that zoning to preserve recreational land and conserve natural areas should be stricter for the county. The second point is related to the Blue Earth County Land Use Plan's Appendix A, which is maps of the county. The proposed site is highly sensitive to pollution due to the vertical travel time for waterborne contaminants to interbed rock aquifers and through near-surface materials. This area is also close to karst, which is a type of landscape where the dissolving of bedrock can create things like sinkholes, sinking screens, caves, and springs. So the people who are worried about the water quality, their wells, that's in the Blue Earth County Land Use Plan, that that might also be an issue. The last thing I want to address is the noise study. So Minnesota guidelines for residential parks, or residential areas and parks, indicate that a noise rating of 65 decibels for L10 and 60 decibels for L50 during daytime. However, the EPA guidelines for outdoor noise say that outdoor noise shouldn't exceed 55 decibels to prevent annoyance and interference with activities such as sleeping, working, and recreation. So the EPA guidelines are stricter. There are several concerns with the noise study, too. It's unclear how the mining noises were determined. The study references a previous study the company did in 2019. I went back and looked up that study. There isn't any information about how those noises were collected, how that was analyzed, how that was validated in it. Noise monitoring needs to consider a lot of factors that aren't included in what was submitted here. So the temperature, the noise is collected at, the time of day, time of year, the elevation, things like that. That information isn't provided. The area that this is going into has the dam. The dam provides a lot of background noises, but that background noise also fluctuates by how much flow there is. So knowing when the background noise is taken, was that a high-flow day or a low-flow day would also impact the background noise levels. The study of the proposed site for the noise also says that background monitoring was conducted for 30 minutes at each site, except for Site 5, which was a three-minute snapshot. Minnesota's Guide to Noise Control Monitoring procedures specify- Minnesota's Guide to Noise Control Monitoring procedures specifies that monitoring should be conducted for at least one hour. So this is relatively short based on the guidelines that Minnesota provides. There are also other requirements that Minnesota specifies that weren't addressed in the noise study that was included. There's also standards for internal noise as well. So what the noise would be inside someone's house that are stricter than outdoor noise, that wasn't measured as part of the noise study. Furthermore, the noise study was for
One minute.
...
One minute.
... for studies that will contribute to noise in the area, but they don't account for their cumulative effect. Without considering the cumulative noise from different mining activities and the number of sources emitting noise simultaneously, you can't have a true understanding of the noise impact. So for example, if one source emits noise at 70 decibels, two sources emitting noise at the same level would actually result in 73 decibels, which is noticeably different to the human ear. Decibels are measured on a logarithmic scale, meaning that a 10-decibel increase sounds twice as loud. Based on the information provided, 10-decibel difference is already present just in the truck hauling noises for receptor site D without considering the other noises. And then something that was mentioned earlier, the study from 2019 based their truck hauling noises on 20 trucks, where this proposal is basing it on 50 trucks. So even the truck hauling noise
Time is up.
Thank you, ma'am.
Anyone else wishing to speak on PC 1923?
I was close. Good morning. My name is Cassandra Peterson. I live at 54058-Grapevine Lane, Mankato, Minnesota, 56001. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me and other members of our community. I have worked all night in the emergency department, and I'm staying up to come to this meeting and express how difficult this gravel pit would make our lives. After this meeting, I plan to go home and sleep. If there were gravel trucks hauling all day back and forth, how easy do you think it would be to sleep and return for another night shift? The intersection to this proposed gravel pit is about a little bit over 30 feet from my bedroom window. I live right on the corner of the first house as you turn in, the Grapevine Lane. The intersection is very busy, as listed earlier, so that's a huge concern already. I work straight overnights at the local hospital, and sleeping in the day is necessary to my livelihood and career. I've been serving our local community as a nurse in the emergency department and other surrounding emergency departments for over four years. If this gravel pit was to happen, me and my husband would need to uproot our lives and look for a new place to call home. My husband and I purchased our first home here on Grapevine Lane with the thought of having a quiet neighborhood and a safe area to raise our family. The area would become just the opposite if the gravel pit was to go through. I ask you to just please consider yourself in my shoes, along with my neighbors and surrounding community. If you were to have this placed 30 feet from your bedroom window, how would you like that? So it doesn't matter if the actual gravel pit itself is 1,000 feet away, I will still be hearing 100-plus truck trips daily going right past my window, plus the noise from the pit itself. Along with the numerous points made from other members of our community and our lawyer, Joe, I am in agreement with opposing this gravel pit. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1923?
My name is Louise Henderson. I'm here today with my husband, Eric, my mother, and my brother, Iris Nelson and Byron Nelson. And we live at 54046-188th Street, Mankato. This property, I am the trustee for the trust, which is called Paradise Valley Trust. It was named by our great-grandfather, who actually sold sandwiches to the workers building the original bridge. We have owned property, we've owned that property. My great-grandparents have owned the dam store. The surrounding property, including the campground, the store, we have property on both sides of the dam. We would really like our neighbors to understand that we want to work with them. We have wanted to work with them since the very beginning. The first vote on this was with our township, and no one showed up at that meeting. It has not been, it has always been public knowledge. We have always wanted to be completely upfront. We have offered to answer questions to our best ability or get those answers, and we have had one conversation with a person in the area. I would like to thank those who did reach out, because the amount of traffic that has started now, and the fact that people have not come to us, and gestures that have been made unfortunately have made me, as the person living, and my husband, as the people living next to this road, fearful. I no longer want to work in my front yard. Please come to us and ask us questions. We have a long history in that area. We do not want to breed problems. We want to make sure that our groundwater is good. We want to make sure that our neighbors are taken care of. But it is also agricultural land that does not produce on a regular basis. We have no, it's very spotty. It is rocky. It is sand. It is not conducive to farming. I apologize, I'm not a public speaker. I was not quite prepared for this. We do know that there have been studies, and that we have passed those all. They've also added extra studies that we have passed. The EAW, we have, as a trust, no problem with that. We want to make sure that our environment is safe. We understand that it's going to change the layout of the neighborhood. It is farther behind than people realize, I believe. They will be going through our yard, basically, which has been our field road all our lives. We've had agricultural equipment go through there forever, and we have never had a complaint. We cannot hear it from our house. We work from home. I have also worked nights and had to deal with the same thing, sleeping through. And we've also dealt with this in '86. Change is hard. We understand that. We understand that there's going to be change in the valley. When the road went through in '86, it was our family that, it went through our farm. We did not, we didn't reach out on any angry level, because that was what was good for our community. We want it to be good for our
One minute.
We want it to be good for our neighbors, and we want them to be able to come to us instead of us having to be the last ones to know. We want to be able to answer questions or get those answers. So thank you to those of you that were able to, that I was able to speak with ahead of time, and who came to us ahead of time. We've had one person come, and we had a very, very good conversation. We welcome those. But we were very concerned as well for the safety around us, of the people around us, and for the safety of people that bike and our weekends, and we like our weekends, too, on the deck, you know? So we want to make sure that it's conducive for everyone. But we want to know, we want you to know, too, that we want, we feel that this is the best resource
Time is up.
... of this area.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak on PC 1923?
Your Honor, Matthew, sorry, Board, Matthew Berger, Gisselson, and Hunter. I represent W. Lorenzen Sons Construction. I want to thank Louise for her comments. I also want to emphasize that when projects get proposed, there's a lot of fear and vague statements that come up about how things are going to change. The reality is, this is already the most studied project that I have ever worked on, and I do a lot of zoning work in my practice. In connection with this application, I believe it was close to 30 studies were already performed by experts to address the very concerns that are now being raised with vague statements. Noise has been studied. Archaeological resources have been studied. Water has been studied. Dust is covered with state permits. All of this was done in advance here. So there's nothing new here. I understand where people are coming from, the unknown, but the reality is, this is already the most studied project that I have seen, and I would suspect the most studied project that you guys have seen when you dig in and look at the work that's already been done. The factual record shows that these concerns aren't borne out by the facts and the studies. It's a safe and good project, and because of the late filed petition for an EAW, we'll address that more fully at the appropriate time. But this is not something that is coming up late. It's something that has been studied long-term, and all of these considerations have already been looked at by experts who have deemed them not to be concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on 1923, PC 1923? Go ahead, sir.
My name is Kyle Mullen. I live at 19234-540th Avenue, Mankato, Minnesota, 56001. I know you said this isn't question and answer, but can I cede my time?
To what?
Can I give my time to someone else to speak?
No.
Okay. Then I am going to finish my wife's thoughts, because, quite frankly, she's put a lot of work in, into this this summer, and I think she, given her background, has a great eye for study design, research design, and I think her thoughts are valid. I want to finish her thoughts just to put some context to it. As the gentleman just mentioned, you know, yeah, the reality is, there's a lot of studies that have been done. That doesn't mean the studies were done correctly. Again, not an expert on sound, but I think my wife's concerns she mentioned earlier are valid with the methodology of that study. Again, to put something that into context, the mining noise is mentioned in that actual study will reach a decibel level of 72 for the L10. I realize that's only six minutes, and according to the decibel level chart that's presented in the packet, you know, that's about the sound of a vacuum cleaner at, I think, one meter, three meters, I can't remember exactly. But to put that in context, do you want to be camping on a peaceful day and have to talk over a vacuum even for six minutes? As you mentioned additionally, a problem with the potential study is that they separate the sounds out. They have the in-mining, or the mining operation sounds, and they have the haul truck sounds. It never accounts for the cumulative effect of those sounds together, nor the background noise. So the actual noise impact here could be much higher than is actually reported. These noise levels are mandated by the state. They are the maximum permissible levels. I think because of the unique scenario of this area, that we should be striving for better than just the maximum permissible levels. And I'll leave you with this analogy. If you're driving through a residential area in town, the speed limit's probably 30 miles per hour. If you encounter a park where kids are playing, do you slow down? Most likely. I hope you do. Just because you drive 30 minutes, 30 miles per hour doesn't mean you do in that scenario. Good judgment tells you to adjust your speed based on your surroundings. And that principle applies here. Just because a mine can go here doesn't mean it needs to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak on PC 1923? Well, we've had a lot of people talk, and I do want to thank this crowd, because you were all respectable. You were not demeaning. You gave facts. And that's not something that we see sometimes in public hearings. And whether you're on one side or the other side, everybody here was respectable. So thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute break.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Is there time for a clarifying question?
Please.
I guess I do appreciate the citizen input here and others the week before. I know I had a lot of input after clarifying that there was a petition that was for EAW. I spent part of my Father's Day doing a little bit weekend research on EAWs and things like that. Two of my questions are, and I want everybody to know that the EQB Environmental Quality Board, part of the Department of Administration in the state government, has a nine-page document that talks about the 14 steps of an EAW, step by step, specifically for a local government. My clarifying question is, and I don't need an answer now, but I want to make sure it's on the record. Earlier in the hearing, came up the 60-day rule, and my question will be for your future time, on page seven of the EQB handout, it's got a helpful tip. Some proposers think the 60-day rule, Minnesota Statute 15.99, continues to apply to projects that are going through the environmental review process, but this is not the case. RGU, Responsible Government Unit Staff, should inform the project proposal that because environmental review decisions can often take 30-plus days to be reached, environmental review is one of the exceptions to the rule. Essentially, the clock stops ticking on the 60-day rule until environmental review has been completed, and once environmental review has been completed, the clock is reset at 60 days. So my question, Mr. Chair, would be, is that accurate, and is that, would that apply at this time? And I don't need an answer now, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of this document out there as we go through this EAW process.
And that obviously will go to our county attorney. So.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate, again, I appreciate everybody's time and the ability to be respectful to everybody. It means a lot to me. Thank you very much. We're going to have a 10-minute break and give a chance. We have another large group coming in, so if you certainly are willing to stay, if you wish to, but somebody may be sitting on your lap. Make sure we had the camera going. All right. Welcome back. As a reminder, these are public hearings. Public comment will be allowed in just a moment. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respected. We just had a real important hearing just before this, and everyone was civil and respected, and I expect that that's going to happen here, too. Please note, this meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning, and will let you know when you use the allotted time. We used to have a three-minute time limit, but we extended it to five, and it will be respected, and it will be shut down at five minutes. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive and are not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. We're going to continue on with the remaining planning and zoning items, and would staff please introduce the next item before the board? And when you do, please state your name and the item, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dane Lynch, Property Environmental Resources, Wetland Specialist. Before you today, I have PC 18-23. Is a request from William Bealan for an after-the-fact interim use permit to allow for the cutting and filling on a bluff for the construction of a shoreline access path. The site is in the shoreline of Valentine Lake, a recreational lake, development lake at as classified by the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, and includes Lot 3, Block 1 of Hager's Lake Valentine subdivision. The property is zoned rural town site. The project address is 112 Jack's Drive, Madison Lake, Minnesota. Staff presented the report. There were no comments from the applicant, and there were also no comments from the public. The Planning Commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission, by a roll-call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the County Board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff.
All right. At this time, we will open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 1823, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Anyone wishing to comment on PC 1823?
Dr. Theodore Sertig. I live at 1-6-2-0-0-560 Lane, just about a mile west of the compost site.
Oh, sir, we're not talking about the compost site right now.
Okay, sorry.
But thank you very much.
Shortly.
This is PC 1823. It's on the William Bealan property. I'll give one more chance to talk, to give a comment on PC 1823. All right. If not, we will close the public comment portion. Is there any comments from the board?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
I will entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the passage of the resolution based on the recommendations by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes. Please read the next report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Considine, Senior Land Use Planner. The next item on our agenda is PC 13-23. Is request for review and approval of a vacation of a public right-of-way by Blue Earth County and John F. Just, Senior Family Cabin Trust. The right-of-way is described as a 14-foot right-of-way lying adjacent to Lot 1 in the plat of Hillside Lake, Washington, which lies southerly of the easterly extension of the north line of Lot 1 as shown in the plat of Hillside Lake, Washington. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the report, and there was no public comment. The Planning Commission had no questions or concerns regarding the proposal. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission, by roll-call vote, voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the County Board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. Additionally, it should be noted that on Thursday, June 16, Jamestown Township provided their approved resolution in support of the vacation as well. And the board action here this morning is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding PC 1323, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Again, if there is anyone wishing to comment on PC 1323. And last time, is anyone wishing to comment on PC 1323? If not, we will close the public comment portion. Any comments from the board?
No. No comments, Mr. Chair.
Not a.
No comments that I would move to approve based on the findings and conditions?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Next, that is passed. The next one is PC 1623. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. PC 16-23 is a request for review and revocation by Blue Earth County of a conditional use permit known as PC 35-21 to operate a source-separated organic material compost facility due to noncompliance with the findings and conditions of approval. The property is zoned agricultural and is in the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 1 Lyra Township. Site address is 1-6-2-2-5, 563rd Avenue, Good Thunder, Minnesota. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the report, and the property owners were represented. Fifteen individuals addressed the Planning Commission. The following list includes the concerns that were expressed. Number one, the facility is out of compliance with the conditions of the permit. Number two, trash and plastic from the site blow out into the neighboring farm fields. Number three, the number of flies has exploded. Number four, a wide range of odor descriptions were noted, all of which indicated the odors are extremely unpleasant. It was noted that the odors permeate into homes, vehicles, and clothing. One individual stated the odors are traumatizing. Another individual said at times the odors can nearly be tasted. Number five, people are getting physically sick from the odors. Number six, the odors are impacting the residents of the city of Good Thunder. Number seven, the odors impact gatherings at neighborhood or neighboring properties. Number eight, property values will decrease. Number nine, dust from the gravel haul route settles onto nearby building sites. And number 10, do not table this item to a later date. Action needs to be taken now. The calibration of the testing equipment was also questioned by a public citizen. Members of the Planning Commission expressed their concern with the comments provided by the public. Following the discussion, a motion was made to table the item to June 28. The motion died due to lack of a second. Legal representative of the MFS compost facility was allowed to comment. The attorney representing the owners of the facility provided comments to the commission. In summary, the representative of MFS stated he understood that the motion had failed, and the staff had made the recommendation in part because a conditional use permit is a protected property right, which means you can't take it away or revoke it without due process. Due process requires adequate notice and an opportunity to be heard. He added that due process is lacking because the staff report recommends revocation, and this wasn't shared until late. Based on the evidence that the property owner hasn't had adequate time to review, he submitted to the public record a packet that the PC would have little time to review. The law is clear that you can't revoke without material evidence of noncompliance. The findings are not a legal course for revocation. Staff identified one condition as the basis for revocation, Condition 14, which states operating procedures does not constitute a nuisance. Permit and license compliance is the only way to revoke, and the staff report doesn't address this. There is no basis for revocation. Condition 14 remains an adequate basis for revocation, and the staff report relies on their definition of nuisance, and this isn't addressed in the permit. Staff has developed a smell rating category with a staff standard that has to be met. County is trying to revoke a permit that is not in the CUP. Representative asked further, how can it be expected for someone to meet a criteria they're unfamiliar with? It is arbitrary and capricious. The staff standard does not establish a nuisance. Any nuisance analysis for this facility standard must begin with the location and surrounding uses. The representative stated it's in the ag zone. People living in the ag zone have to deal with odor. Compost facility is normally occurring odor, as was understood from the beginning. Staff questioned, the representative stated the staff questioned folks' methods. There are four feedlots in the vicinity, and there is smell in this area. New categories to describe smell surrounding eight areas have smells. There is nothing in the staff report that describes staff qualifications. The facility owner consistently worked with staff regarding odor, and May of 2022, it was in compliance and continued to make improvements. Best practices and improvements include adding an aerator, mixing within the building, windrows are turned two to three times a week, and staff has been replaced at the facility, testing a new product that treats the compost windrows. The facility hears complaints and tries to react to it. The 60-day compliance time period was not a fair opportunity. Improvements cannot be made during that time period due to winter and rain. It was next to impossible to improve during that time. He concluded by asking that the revocation is not pursued and asked to extend 120 days. The Planning Commission then resumed their discussion. Members expressed their concern with being able to process the information quickly. Commission members stated their concern for the public and the applicant. One member added, "The commission is walking a fine line if due process is not provided to the applicant and the commission acts hastily and the potential consequences of doing so." Another commission member stated he understands the concerns expressed and the position of the county and due process. He added that the Planning Commission is in the middle of due process. They have been notified, and they were in the process of a hearing. He added that there are no substantiative property rights being decided tonight. The Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the County Board, and the board can listen or may not listen to the recommendation of the Planning Commission. There was no further discussion. A motion was made to support staff's finding of revocation and proceed with the recommendation of revocation of the permit to the County Board based on the findings, conditions prepared by staff. The motion was seconded, and the motion carried by roll-call vote of four in favor and three opposed. Additionally, this evening, or this morning, included in the board packet is the submitted materials from the Planning Commission meeting provided by MFS, as well as a memo summarizing staff's review of the materials. And the board action here this morning is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. At this time, we're going to give the permit owner an opportunity to speak to this matter. Now, if they would like to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. The permit owner will be allowed 10 minutes to speak, and I'll ask the county administrator to give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used the allotted time. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good morning. Excuse me. My name is Tim Kelly. I'm an attorney with Stinson LLP, and I represent MFS Recycling, 50 South Sixth Street, Suite 2600, Minneapolis, Minnesota. County staff summarized some of our legal arguments and the arguments that we've submitted, both legally and factually, and staff accurately cited that this conditional use permit is a property right. That can't be taken away without due process or without substantial evidence that a condition agreed upon in the conditional use permit has been violated. With respect to due process, if you view the Planning Commission meeting, you'll see that county staff recognized that due process was not being afforded, recommending that the public hearing be continued until June 28. And at least three commission members stated on the record that due process was an issue. Now, in the most recent staff report, staff suggests that due process was alleviated because MFS was able to submit a rebuttal, you know, less than three business days after 165-page staff report was made available. MFS submission was made on June 7, excuse me, right during the public hearing, and that record will show that numerous commission members stated on the record that they didn't have time to review that submission now. Somebody even joked about how long it would take to review. The public hearing before the Planning Commission is one of the steps that your ordinances outline for the revocation process, and we were not, MFS was not afforded adequate notice or time because the Planning Commission gave no consideration to what MFS had submitted. And so part of what you're doing today, I believe respectfully, is weighing the Planning Commission recommendation in favor of revocation, and I would submit that there's really no weight that should be given to that recommendation because they gave no consideration to what MFS had submitted. You know, the county, again, cannot revoke the conditional use permit in addition to due process without substantial evidence establishing a material violation of a condition agreed upon in the conditional use permit. From the county staff report to the proposed resolution or packet, revoking the conditional use permit, there are a number of references to alleged violations of findings that this board made when it approved the conditional use permit. Those findings are irrelevant on the issue of revocation. That is not a legal basis to revoke a conditional use permit. The Minnesota statute's clear, it's cited in our materials, that a conditional use permit remains valid so long as the conditions agreed upon are complied with. And what we have here is a revocation proceeding that focuses on one single condition, and that is Condition 14. Condition 14 provides that operating procedures and adequate measures shall be utilized in accordance with state of Minnesota permits and county licenses to ensure the use of the property does not constitute a nuisance. This shall include, but is not limited to, odor mitigation measures such as pond aerators which shall be implemented in accordance with county license agreement. So this Condition 14, which is the sole legal basis that you're seeking to revoke this permit, establishes compliance with the state permit and county license means there's no nuisance. There's nothing in the record that suggests that MFS has violated state permit or county license or not installed pond aerators in accordance with the county license agreement. Therefore, if there's compliance with the state permit and county license, there's no legal basis, excuse me, to revoke the conditional use permit. Even if Condition 14 is somehow not satisfied by MFS's compliance with the state permit and county license, the condition remains legally deficient because it contains no discernible standard for determining a nuisance. The staff report confirms that there's no discernible standard in the conditional use permit that you issued or approved. Rather than relying on Condition 14, staff cites to a July 2015 Minnesota House Research Information Brief to establish what it believes is a nuisance level condition, and then it establishes previously undisclosed smell rating categories and criteria upon which to test whether the staff created nuisance standard has been met. Again, the CUP contains none of this information. You can't provoke a conditional use permit by saying, "You failed this test, you failed this standard," when that standard is nowhere to be found in the conditional use permit. We've also submitted an expert report from Michael Brandt, who has experience in testing odor methodology. His critiques explain why what the county staff did was flawed and resulted in ambiguous results. I'll refer you to that report. Some of those reasons include failure to account for all these different surrounding uses and failing really to account for the known reality when you first approve this project that compost facilities have normal naturally occurring odors. That's expected. That's normal. That's why I presume you made this a conditional use in the agricultural zone district. You know, nothing that we've submitted or what I've said today at the Planning Commission meetings to suggest that MFS is simply ignored when it receives information from the county. They communicated with the county. They communicated with the county throughout this process. They've made a number of different improvements in operations as detailed in our submission. And so, we're at the point where, what we're asking you for today is to table this matter until your October meeting to give a full summer and a fair opportunity for MFS to continue its improvements. If the matter is tabled, one of the first changes you'll learn of at MFS is that Bob Wertz and his companies intend to assume full ownership of MS for Cycling and the facility. Mr. Wertz is currently a minority member. There's three that I think the county is well aware of. Mr. Wertz, who was in attendance at the planning commission meeting, wanted to be here today, but he is in Arizona for a close friend's funeral. I didn't think of request to continue the hearing due to that conflict would be well received, but he did want to be here. I bring up Mr. Wertz specifically because I think he's well-known to the county. His companies or him have done work for the county. He has businesses in this county. He owns real property in this county. And I think he's known for doing what he says he will do. Mr. Wertz would be the single point of contact for the county moving forward. As explained in our expert report, we think a full summer with the aid of that expert and improvements and changes detailed in our submissions that-
One minute remaining.
Thank you. That the facility will be operating in a condition that everyone is satisfied with. We don't believe the record establishes a nuisance level of odors. We don't believe you have a legal basis to revoke based on Condition 14, but we do recognize that the county expects improvements to be, continue to be made and we're willing to do that. We're just asking for that additional time to work closely with county staff to implement those improvements. Assuming I have a few seconds left, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll be open to public comment on portion of this hearing. If you'd like to make a comment regarding 16-23, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And I'd like to remind the public that this is a five-minute time limit. You will be giving a one-minute warning. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 1623?
Dr. Theodore Surti, 16200560 Lane, about a mile west-
Could you, could you come closer to the mic, sir?
16200560 Lane, about a mile west of the compost site. And again, the smell has continued to get worse and worse over the years. We can tell the difference between a big operation and the smell that's emanating from this site. And it limits our ability to go out in our yard, you know, a third to half of the times during the process of the summer, even during the winter. We can't leave our windows open at night because the smell comes in, it's very noxious. So, we're not able to use our property or have people out, grandkids out to use our property to enjoy it to the point just due to that smell. Whatever they say about any monitoring operation or device that picks that up is completely inaccurate. I'm not sure, I'm not qualified to really speak on that too much. But again, it limits our ability to do that. We're also concerned about the property values of our property with that smell, being able to sell our property at any kind of reasonable rate after that, which is a real concern. And again, they've had plenty of opportunities over the years to rectify this situation. We just don't see that they've been able to do that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners and Chairman. Doug Hager, 56549 171st Street, Good Thunder. I live about 2.2 miles north of the compost facility. Appreciate Mr. Kelly's comments. He actually talked about when this was first, when the permit was first approved. I was at that meeting in 2012. And Mr. Brunder, I believe you were too. I don't know if any of the rest of you were, but, so this was presented initially to be a family-run facility that was going to take in yard waste, scraps, and food items from local facilities, hospitals, schools, restaurants, whatnot, and maybe the surrounding Blue Earth County area. And that's, that's the way this started out to be. But interesting enough, odor was one of the lowest issues. It was brought up, but it was quickly dispelled because it was told if these things are run right, there is little to no odor. And this, this was brought out. A lot of the concerns were more about the dust, about the flies, about the truck traffic, you know, and, but it was approved and it was approved in a way that this was really going to be a good thing for Blue Earth County. Well, we know, we all know what's happened over the years here and it's more than two, it's, it's more like eight. But the county staff, the planning commission, has done a very good job trying to work with MFS and get these issues resolved. And we, as residents, have been patient and, you know, trying to get this, see this through. This, this is broken. This whole thing is broken and the planning commission, the county staff knows how to fix it and they made that recommendation to you guys. And one bright spot for me today is the privilege to stand here and talk to you guys. I appreciate that. And you have the ability to fix this and, and we're asking you to do that. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your time. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1623?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Board Members. My name is Troy Gilchrist. I'm an attorney with Kennedy and Graven. We're at 150 South Fifth Street in Minneapolis. So, I'm here today representing Lyra Township. I have worked exclusively with local governments for more than 30 years, including assisting with the revocation of conditional use permits. It's a significant step, to be sure, but choosing to regulate land uses includes a legal duty to administer and enforce those regulations. The town is asking the county board to follow through on that duty by supporting the staff's recommendations in a very detailed and well-supported staff report to move forward with the revocation of the CUP. I would like to briefly address some of the issues raised by the facility to avoid or delay revocation. Bottom line, this is not nearly as complicated as they seem to suggest. Due process, the facility asserted that it didn't have sufficient due process. Due process means a reasonable notice and a reasonable opportunity to be heard. The county has far exceeded that obligation in this case. Odor has been a longstanding issue, as I'm sure you all are very well aware of and that you just heard from some of the residents. The notice of violation was issued 109 days ago. The notice of intent to seek revocation was issued 48 days ago. There was notice in a public hearing held 13 days ago. And now, we're here today for the, excuse me, for the county board's final decision on, on this matter. The facility has had ample notice and an opportunity to be heard. There's no legitimate basis here to claim a lack of due process. As far as a violation of the condition, the facility also seems to take issue with the fact that they're only in violation of one condition. However, each and every condition on a conditional use permit is critical, particularly when it directly relates to mitigating negative impacts on the neighbors. In this case, the condition is one of the most critical issues associated with operating a compost facility, that the facility utilize operating procedures and take adequate measures to ensure it does not constitute a nuisance. Based on the long history here and the extensive work of the county staff to verify the nuisance level of odor, the facility has clearly violated this condition. The asserted compliance with other permits does not constitute compliance with this condition. Each permit has its own standards and you have to review the compliance with this condition in the context of the CUP. It is important to note that this is not a matter of a couple of hard-to-please neighbors repeatedly calling in complaints. The resolution notes the county has received 164 odor complaints from 37 different households. However, the county did not take the neighbor's word for it. Instead, it conducted 111 odor audits over a 12-month period and observed offensive nuisance levels on more than half of those days. And more recently, it conducted an additional 23 odor audits and found even a higher level of noncompliance. In all my time, I don't think I've ever seen staff conduct such an extensive review of neighbor complaints. I think your staff should be commended for their work. The county board does not need to speculate about whether the use will create nuisance orders in the future. It's not a case of only creating occasional or short-term odors. This is a use that has been operating for years and despite the county's effort to work with the operator to control the odor, the facility has shown it creates nuisance level orders more than half of the time. No neighbor should be expected to tolerate such a consistent level of nuisance odor. Finally, on the nuisance aspect itself, cast doubts on whether the smell generated constitutes a nuisance. However, the county need not engage in a scientific debate to determine that a nuisance exists. The very nature of land use regulation is to address negative impacts created by uses. Avoiding or minimizing nuisances affecting other properties is a main reason why we have zoning. Nuisance in this context is determined using an ordinary person standard, not some scientific peer-reviewed study. Not only did the county receive widespread complaints regarding the odor-
One minute.
-it took extensive measures to verify those complaints over more than a year. Its field evaluations demonstrated the facility regularly generates nuisance orders. Essentially, the facility is not complying with that condition and the appropriate action is to move forward. So finally, Mr. Chair and Board Members, the neighbor, the neighbors in a large area around the facility have suffered under the impacts of this use. County staff have demonstrated the facility has violated its CUP and now the town asks that you carry out your enforcement duty and revoke the CUP now and not delay this matter any further. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1623?
Good morning.
My name is Mary Fitzsimmon and my address is 56639 164th Street, Good Thunder, Minnesota. MFS is not ignorant of the fact they are in noncompliance of the conditional use permit. They have been contacted by county staff on numerous occasions over the past 16 months. What you need to understand is that they simply do not care. They are indifferent. They have attached no importance to the harm they are causing. This was true of the former owners as well. I was told by one of them to just live with it, as they do. When something is not important to you, why would you make an effort to change it, especially if the changes would cost money? It took MPCA to close MFS a few years back. We were hopeful things would improve when they reopened. While some adjustments were made, a new, even more devastating odor began to overcome us each day and continues to this very day. On June 7th, 2023, the chairman of the planning commission stated, "A recommendation had been made to them to allow for a special hearing to take place on June 28th in order for MFS to speak. No rebuttal would be allowed." There was no explanation as to who made this recommendation and why. This was dismissive and belittling to all the residents in attendance as well as to the county staff who worked so very hard to resolve this issue. On March 2nd, 2023, MFS was given a 60-day notice to come into, come into compliance. As I stand here today, the extreme foul odor, explosion of flies and dust continues. I know MFS cannot be forced to care about the residents who bear these consequences. However, you have the power to pull this permit and close them down. I am asking you to remove this disruptive and horrendous force that prevents us from enjoying our property and living our lives. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1623?
Hi, my name is Brenda Wilcox and I live at 309 Second Avenue Northeast, McInnes, Minnesota. I've been before, you guys, before, many, many years ago, over 10. A lot of these people were here as well. I had a speech planned today, but I'm not going to read that because a lot of things that you hear from this gentleman here are very disturbing. You all were sold something that, in my opinion, from the beginning, never worked. Mr. Malankovich stated over and over and over, "This would never smell." It's all in public record. From here at the county, to the MPCA, to contested case hearings, to so many things that these citizens filed, and over and over and over, they said it'd never smell. The conditions and the rules that went with the solid waste permit were never followed from the beginning. I see things that disturbed me here today on this. I mean, there was never supposed to be any mixing done with outside that building, so why all of a sudden are we going to have a magical fix and mix everything in the building and hope this will fix it? We tried to tell you from the beginning and I think we were, certainly people just disregarded us. Anyone who spoke against this was trouble. But this is, these things were laid out by all these people sitting here 10 years ago. You go before the MPCA, it is all done and it is all in public record. So, these things that this gentleman over here is saying don't matter, do matter. They're smell. You can't do anything about it. If, if any research had been done beforehand, before this was passed, everyone would have known that. With those smells go a lot of really bad things in the air. And I could sit here all day and tell you what they are, but do some research. Bacteria, pathogens, mold, so many things that can make, make people sick. A lot of people, when they did complain at first, again, were absolutely disregarded, but the complaints that we lodged and brought forward both through the county and the MPCA were things that went against the conditional use permit. They were things that went against the solid waste permit that was set up for this hybrid composting experimental facility out in Good Thunder. Guys, the experiments failed long ago. I pray today, after what I went through and what I'm hearing these people are still going through, that you close it down, but I also let you know that these things were addressed. They were addressed early on. They were brought out by people and sadly, we were right on way too many of the things that we brought out and the nuisance and the harm this has caused to a very small local community. You guys pitted neighbor against neighbor. You've torn a community apart. This needs to be revoked and stopped today so this, this area can heal from what has been done for 10 years. The only thing I ask today is if this is revoked, and I again pray that it is, you guys do the proper environmental research that needs to be done as to what, the harm that has been caused by this site. Not only do you have the processes that went on, I mean, when it couldn't be sold, when it was, didn't test right, liquids from the site, they've just all been dumped in a very small area around this community. You can't take waste from all over southern Minnesota, out of state, all these different places, commercial waste, dump it in one tiny area and hope that everything is going to be all good. I just respectfully ask today that you guys do revoke this permit and to you, if anything he says bothers you, just know that we did fight all these things. There were rules that were never followed from day one and it's all in public record. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wishing to comment on PC 1623?
Curtis Speck, and we're a half a mile from the compost site. In the original permit, they said this. Odor can originate in compost for three reasons. In the original permit, they said this. Odor can originate in compost for three reasons. One, internal air temperature too low. Two, moisture content is too high. Three, carbon-nitrogen ratio is unbalanced. And it's exactly what they did. They do not know how to do that. That's been our experience. Problem after problem, but if you don't know how, and it's not so easy just to alter the temperature, alter the moisture, that's not at all. So weigh all that. You somehow approved this. Now you have to help unprove that. Difficult, isn't it, to unprove something? We can do that. We need your help to do that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on PC 1623?
Yeah, I'm Robert Anderson, Mayor of Good Thunder for 31 years. I guess our town is the closest to this compost site, and when the wind is from the northeast, it comes into town, and it is pungent. It is an offensive odor, and our townspeople shouldn't have to live with something like this. I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but for small towns to survive is getting harder to do each and every year. I met with a developer that wanted to maybe have a little housing project going on in Good Thunder here, oh, maybe a month and a half, two months ago, but I don't see how we could sell that if another day he comes in and that smell is in the city of Good Thunder. Originally, it did have the original compost smell, but something has happened in the last year. I mean, I've heard from people that it's pig barns. I have loaded pigs since 1968. I have hauled them from 1974 until present, and there is one thing I think I am an expert on is pig smell, and it is not pig smell. But it is a smell of death. When I haul pigs and I have a dead pig in the trailer, I can smell that. That is the same smell that comes into our town with the northeast wind. I don't know what product you are receiving now that you didn't get two or five years ago, but it is now a pungent smell, and our town won't survive if we can't sell houses. There's a few empty houses now. They used to not be empty. They sold this fast. So, does it have any bearing on it? I don't know. But again, like you've heard from other people, it is your responsibility to do the responsible thing for the citizens of Good Thunder and all the area citizens that live around that. Do you know how filled this room would be if this was a mile and a half south of Mankato, and you had south winds? You wouldn't... you'd fill this whole courthouse. So I think you need to take all this information very, very concerned individually and think about it, and make the right decision for the people in Blue Ridge County. And you have a new, what, $30 million building you're trying to get? You have opposition just on a nice, state-of-the-art building. I mean, we're more than welcome that in Good Thunder. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. Dan Fitzsimmons, 56639-164th Street. Just got a couple points. Legal counsel mentioned the letter from Mike Brandt, the engineer, on how it was virtually impossible to make any improvements to the site during March and April of 2023 because of the freezing and thawing of the piles. That simply is not true. If the compost is being done right, the pile should be 135 to 175 degrees, and plus, if it was frozen, it wouldn't smell. I've never smelled a dug a dead hog on my place in the middle of the winter. They freeze. There's no smell. We smelled that. You go back to the county staff, January, how many days they recorded that odor? It was frozen? I don't think so. The permit holder feels they should get a pass on odor because they're located in an egg-zone district. While it's true that people living in the egg district can and are exposed to normal agricultural smells, this smell is far from normal. They say the permit doesn't describe what is a nuisance. Goes back to something I tell a lot of people about a lot of things. Common sense and courtesy, that tells you what it is. They have none. They forced this on us. They, as my wife said, "They don't care. The previous owners didn't care." It was pointed out by legal counsel in their letter to you people that I'm the leader of the group pushing for closure of this site. Says I'm related to the former owners. Yes, I am. I grew up with them. They're my second cousins. I had a lot of talks with them when they were owners about the issues at that site, trying to help them. At one point, shortly after I got off the Planning and Zoning Board, they asked me about getting a permit to expand, and I says, "You better not try that till you get your house in order." I've talked to them. I tried to stay under the radar on this whole thing, hoping that they would fix it. When the site reopened in December of 2021 and started admitting this foul odor, I immediately reached out to the planning and zoning staff looking for answers. Since then, my wife and I have been helping our friends and neighbors navigate through the system to document complaints and voice their concerns. I feel that was the right thing to do as a neighbor and a citizen. To say that I didn't say anything about this site till it changed ownership is another blatant lie. I'm on the record with staff when my cousin still owned it. I don't appreciate somebody guessing from Minneapolis what I'm going... what's going through my head. Counsel stated this whole due process thing, and he stated that they didn't have enough time to talk at the public planning and zoning hearing. The chairman asked him at the beginning if they wanted to speak. Counsel got up, gave his name, said they were going to withhold any comment. He got a chance to speak at the end. I don't know what more they need. You can... I went through, I think it's 5,000-some pages of documents they requested from you people. I've read a lot of that stuff. It's doable in three working days, if you may-
One minute.
...longer, from eight to five. I'm asking you to do the right thing. There is no benefit to the citizens of Lyra Rapidan Township or the city of Good Thunder to keep this site open. Just end it. Don't worry about future lawsuits. Take care of this thing today. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1623?
John Brynley. I live at 126 Red Oak Drive, but I have properties at 16-511-563 Avenue and 16-762-563 Avenue, and they're both approximately less than a mile north. One's a half a mile north, and the other one's about 3/4 of a mile north of the facility. I buy... the closest one is a hog facility there, and I'm probably the largest finishing unit in that area. I have about 3,600 finishing hogs there, and I've never had one complaint for smell. My manure is only hauled in the fall, and when it is, it's injected, and 90% of it is trucked away more than 20 miles from the area to different farm fields. You can be in the barns and physically get sick from the smell coming if you have a south wind, and it's not my hog site. It's the smell of a mast grave coming out of there. And I was in my hog barns this morning, and I don't smell right now, and I haven't had a complaint from a single soul that I stink. And I was in a facility today, and I haven't showered or changed. But if you send your attorney down there and go to their own compost site, he'd have to throw his clothes away because even dry cleaning won't get it out. That's the difference in the smells. One thing you got to look at is the property values will go down, and they already have, probably. And it's not just the local areas. It's all the way to Good Thunder, and your taxes are going to be some... they're going to start meeting at your taxing because it will affect it, and you've got to look at that point, too. So as you look at lawsuits or... and you'll get them from the owner or the neighbors, too, eventually, and if this keeps coming up, obviously Rapidan's working on it as a whole, but you'll have individuals that'll kick in more than likely. So you got to look at lawsuits versus lawsuits, but what's right? They've had years. My first complaints went to the county of George Leary, and he said, "I've never heard of it before," and I was standing right next to Nathan Alrick, and he said, "I just called him yesterday myself." So at first, it was kind of quiet. Now it's... everybody's gotten to the point where you all agree it's bad, but years ago, we were calling and complaining. It's a tough thing to do when you don't even live there, and it bothers you when you're there. But nobody should have to put up with that, guys. The facility was for the local county compost, and I don't think any of it's coming from here, other than maybe the CFS waste. And I've done the sewers in Mankato, and the CFS waste takes clay pipe. Did you know that? It melts plastic pipe and concrete. But it's getting dumped out there. So, think about it. Do the right thing. Get it out of here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1623?
Kelly Hoverson, 56177 Ivy Road. Every morning, I get up, open my door, and see the compost if the smell don't hit me first. It's horrible. He made a comment, and I did. I worked for Fitzsimmons for 26 years. I worked out at the compost site for seven months. He's talking about this aeration. We tried it. It didn't work. If anything, it made it worse. I mean, it just threw the smell even worse. So, I mean, you're talking that. It's a no-go. I mean, the only way you're going to fix this is shut the place down. I mean, it's... there's no other option. I mean, if you guys... and I've talked to a lot of you guys, Kevin. You were out there. You saw. You smelled it. I mean, would you want to live that way? Nobody does. So do the right thing. Shut the damn place down.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1623?
Good morning. My name's Kristen Lawson, 16698-563rd Avenue, Good Thunder. First, I want to thank Lyra Township for stepping in and getting themselves an attorney. I am one mile away, and we are not in Lyra Township. They're Rapidan Township. And believe it or not, the odor does not stop at Lyra Township. They're out there magically in the corner, and so even the first communication that came out, I had no idea because it went to the township and the members of that township. Well, we were closer than half of those members in the township and didn't receive any communication. I've been here before. I think my first meeting I attended was in 2019. So you guys know my spiel. I have emailed. I had called. I had... I got involved back when I was supposed to be calling George Leary. Talked to him multiple times, and then it was, I think it was a Megan someone that I was supposed to talk to, and then there was Stalberger that I was supposed to be talking to, and I mean, and the list goes on and on. I mean, we've... I've had multiple conversations with law enforcement that were doing patrols in the area to try and monitor smell. There... I mean, there was... they quit driving by, some of them. Don't tell everyone that they quit driving by because they're like, "That is awful. I don't want to breathe that." And then they said straight up, "I feel bad for all of you people that have to live out there," you know? And recently, I was at the Planning and Zoning Committee. We did successfully have a graduation party outside with only a very little amount of smell because as soon as that smell started to come, I looked up and I went, "Oh, no, not today." And the wind changed enough that it took it away. But there were still plenty of people due to County Road 16 being closed to come out from Mankato in our direction. They had to come past the recycling facility. They're like, "What is that smell?" And I'm like, "Mm-hmm." They're like, "We're glad we just drove past," you know, because then they got to our house, and it actually didn't smell. Again, I apologize to some of the other neighbors that were downwind, as we were not that day. Okay? We've all been here. We all know how frustrating it is. I know how frustrating it is to just get yet another email about a citizen complaint regarding smell. I know it's not fun dealing with lawyers. I know it's not fun dealing with townships. I know it's not fun dealing with law enforcement, but right now, it's like a trifecta. Okay? There's so many people going at this thing because it is. It's come down to the public needing a conditional use permit to go outside. We can't go outside and enjoy, you know, a pool in the backyard, or I've got kids that like to go outside and hunt. You know what it's like to sit in the hunting blind when the wind changes and you're sitting in there stuck and just... I mean, it comes in. Obviously, it just circles around you. Nope, they'll come straight in the house. And that's taking away from them enjoying their experiences being children and growing up and living in the country, you know? Riding motorcycles, snowmobiles, all of the things. We tell them, "Well, you can't go that way because I don't want to melt in that smell." We've all... we've all done our part. We've all made the complaints. We've all done way more than our due process for the years that we've been putting up with this to try and move this forward in order to be able to enjoy our own space. And I know that each and every one of you want to do the right thing and surely would not welcome this in your backyard, but I do, if it doesn't... if we don't move forward to shut it down today, I do welcome all of you, your kids-
One minute.
...your grandkids, all of them, to please come on over on a day that it really, really smells, and let's just see how long it can be tolerated outside before they start not feeling well. Because it is a thing. It's not... it's not just words. I myself have been sickened by it. My kids have been sickened by it, and that's just air that's coming inside. So if we do shut it down, I second what someone else said. We need to do the following testing as well to make sure that the residents in the community are safe from what's being put into the air and into our groundwater and soil. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on PC 1623?
Morning, everybody. Eric Graham, 16244-560th Lane. I'm probably the new guy in the room. October 14, I moved in to the man place. Wasn't disclosed about the compost pile, so learn that after the fact. That's a different topic. But to Robert's point, the property value probably would have been adjusted to what I paid for that place had I known about the smell. And because it's tough. Grew up in a farm community, well-versed in hog odors, cattle odors, all those things. Even chicken and turkey is highly ammonia. But this smell here is extremely pungent and repulsive and nauseating. So appreciate the time to say something, and again, replication of the permit would be advised.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on PC 1623? If not, we'll close the public comment portion. Are there any comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll make a few comments before we entertain a motion, but I was one of the people that did not support this at planning and zoning. I will follow their recommendation. I will tell you that. I think we've met due process. The information I had at that meeting when I voted not to move forward, the information is different today. I think the due process has been met, in my opinion, and with some advice from some other smarter people than me. But I just do have to say that, you know, I don't care how many tests we do out there. The nuisance is determined by the people that can't use their property. I mean, and we- I mean, and we have been bombarded, which is okay, with emails, testimony, calls. All of you know that Kevin and I have both been out there more than one occasion, we smelled the smell, my wife's been out there with me, so, um, I understand all that. I, I, I'm going to be supportive of the language we have here today and revoke this, because I think we have heard from the citizens, there is no testing equipment that can test what these people have to live with, and I think we got good records of it, and I think the due process has been met, and I will be on board with this today.
Any other comments?
I, too, have been out there, um, and smelled what you guys are putting up with, and I agree with staff. It's not good. And I will support the revocation also.
And I would, I appreciate all the people that were here the first time around, Brenda, Kristen, I mean, many of these people in this room were here in 2012, yeah, that were here, and we talked about it, and when it was just gonna be a compost site for the, the waste and the garbage in Blue Earth County, and it was just food waste and yard waste. Uh, it has shifted, something's happened, and so I appreciate the people that have been through this for the last 10 years plus.
Kevin, is yours?
Yeah, I guess I, too, wanna, uh, thank those here today, but probably more importantly, thank those that, uh, over the last, at least at my, into my third year now as, as your county commissioner and in that district, uh, all the input, the emails, uh, that's what we asked for, was citizen input. Uh, when we asked for it, we got it. So I appreciate that, uh, from all those of you in the room, and quite frankly, a lot of people that weren't be able to be here today and, and their input. And I'm gonna be supportive of staff's recommendation as well. In what it means.
With that, I would move approval of passage of the resolution based on the recommendations by the planning commissioner.
Second. Got a motion and a second, any more discussion? I will let folks know that I did take a travel out there this, this last weekend. I thought it would be a, a nice little trip to drive around Blue Earth County. Um, my God. I grew up on a hog farm. And I, I know the spots when I'm driving on 169, and there's, and there are spots when you're driving on 169, and you, you know where the confinement barns are. And my wife looks at me, and we both grew up on farms, and, and I always come back to, uh, what my dad used to say, "Well, it smells like money." This didn't, this does not smell like money. This smells like when we, when we, uh, had dead, dead pigs and they, and we were waiting for the rendering truck to come and pick 'em up. Um, so, I will continue on, if any other discussion?
Well, I, Mr. Chair, I guess I just would also add that hopefully we all could, I appreciate everybody being respectful through this process. Um, this process doesn't really end today with this motion, there'll be a, I'm sure, a process is how this goes, and we'll need to work together as we, as we go through that process of, of shutdown or whatever the appropriate, whether it's through the county, through MPCA, and we just ask everybody's help and patience as we work through this process.
I, I also appreciate, uh, everybody's here was respectful. Everybody respected each other's time when you were up on, when, uh, the permitter was up in front of everybody, nobody said a word, everybody respected, and there were no bad words. Um, you don't know how much that means to me. We had the same process earlier on a gravel pit, and we had the same, same thing, and I, I, I think it comes back to our location, uh, the good people we have here in Blue Earth County. With that, um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, the same. The revocation passes.
Thanks to you guys for all your work.
We're gonna take five minute break, five minute break to, to allow folks to leave, and I think we have more people coming in for some ditch hearings. All right. All right, good morning, and welcome everyone to the public hearing for the petition of partial abandonment for County Ditch 26. At this time, I will ask Craig Ostenson to read the judicial documents for this hearing.
Okay. Uh, let's see, we have, the hearing notice was mailed to landowners on May 26, 2023. A hearing notice was posted in the Mankato Free Press on June 11, 2023. The hearing notice was posted at the courthouse, and that is it for jurisdictional documents.
All right, thank you, Greg, can I get a motion and a second to accept the affidavits into legal record?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. That passes. We will now have Mr. Chuck Brandl, uh, review his prepared repair report for this hearing.
All right. Good afternoon, I have Jacob Mueller with me.
Morning. Hi, Jacob.
So, um, we've had, uh, multiple meetings on, uh, County Ditch 26, uh, looking at, um, the partial abandonment and, um, what it would cost to repair the area that is being proposed to be, that was proposed to be abandoned. So, just looking at the existing system, uh, CD 26 drains 7,200 acres. It, it, uh, was established back in 1911, there was, uh, some improvements that were done, and then in 2020, we cleaned and repaired portions of the upper part of the system and, uh, added some side intakes with some funding through the SWCD. So just looking at the watershed, um, the red boundary is County Ditch 26. Uh, JD 83 drains into County Ditch 26, and so does JD 22. So the, the proposed area that we're looking at is at the outlet of, uh, CD 26, and drains two other systems through it. So, here's just the, the plans that were completed back in 2020. We did not address the outlet of the system at that time. So just a few observations, um, there's large amounts of sediment in the outlet. Uh, this is a picture of where the, uh, tree area starts. I did not have drone footage further down, 'cause this is from our previous repair, but there's trees growing in this area, um, and slops that are occurring on the side slopes. Uh, so there's some maintenance that needs to be done. Let's jump in, Jacob?
Yeah, for sure. Um, so with this repair, um, we're looking at maintaining the as-construted condition, just restoring that open ditch to the original constructed, uh, conditions. Maintaining the same drainage coefficient, meaning it has the same geometry. There'd be no change in the adequacy of the outlet, same flow rates. Um, alternative BMTs looked at as a portion of this repair would be alternative side intakes. As you can see in the map here, um, towards the top of the picture, you can see two open ditches converging. The, uh, westernmost one is the CD 26, and the other one to the east is the, uh, CD 83, or JD 83. Um, those converge, and just below that road, um, starts the, the wooded area that we're discussing today. Currently, it's in, in somewhat of a, a condition that has a lot of trees, overgrowth, but is, has been, uh, a portion of the CD 26 system. So this repair proposes to remove those trees, which cannot be in a portion of the ditch side slopes or the ditch buffer.
Yeah, by, legally, the ditch system starts near, um, the La Sure River, but there has been very little maintenance on this stretch, uh, lately, the trees are grown up, so, so it is in need of repair. The original plan showed that there is a flat grade for a little over a thousand feet from, um, where we stopped cleaning last time, and then there's a, a lot of fall down to the river. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, when we were discussing abandonment in, in some preliminary meetings, is there a petition to do so? Uh, we looked at the viability of doing that, um, and consulting drainage statute, it, it wasn't seen as viable, as the portion of this ditch is still functioning as a portion of the ditch. It's still a substantial, serves a substantial purpose and drains three separate watersheds. So, it was seen as still a critical element to drainage systems and should remain as a portion of those systems.
At the landowner meeting that we had, um, a few months ago, we did have, uh, representative for Rankin Noonan, Mr. Van Brugen, and he did confirm the statute, and that really, it's our opinion that you shouldn't abandon this, because it is an outlet for the system and it should be maintained. Outlet for three systems and it should be maintained, so. Uh, we did go over construction practices with the landowners, the only one I'm gonna show is typical tree clearing, um, otherwise, we kinda skipped over the rest of them. We put together a project cost, um, kinda breaking it down by different items. The big cost in this is tree removal. There's a lot of trees, um, it's about 133,000 of the 328. Um, the rest of it, we're estimating cleaning most of the ditch, some side slope repair. Uh, we haven't done a full survey because of the tree canopy, um, or full plans, but we do know that there are eroded areas and areas that do need to be cleaned. We did go over an MDM plan, um, buffers would be part of that, any side inlets. But really, at this point, it's our recommendation that, that a repair is needed, but that the abandonment shouldn't, it's our recommendation not to move forward with it, because it is an outlet for the three systems and, um, should be maintained, so. Kinda stop there for questions, so.
Any questions, Mr. Chair?
Yes. Um, help me with my memory, Chuck, but I remember the conversation with the attorney saying that we basically have to remove the trees also, right? As part of the management of the ditch system?
Yes.
Um, and the fact that it is supplying an outlet for other ditches to abandon it would be just, was, was that even a lot, was it even allowed, or was that? I know we clearly said the trees had to be removed, 'cause I was thinking we could just leave the trees for now, but wasn't even the abandonment kind of just not allowed? Or, or?
So, under, you can go ahead. Yeah. Yeah, I'm just rereading the statute again. It, it says that any part of the drainage system essentially cannot be abandoned if you determine that it does serve a substantial useful purpose.
Right, yeah, there's, that's what I thought.
It's the outlet for three systems, so, just because of that, so.
Yeah, and it was, I understa, I understand what the petitioners are trying to accomplish, I mean, it's the trees and the bluff, it's nice, but
Trying to, trying to save cost, yeah.
Yeah, and we're trying to save cost, too, I understand that.
Yeah.
Would it cost a lot more to break that tree cleaning up into two or three projects? So that it's not so, not so abrupt, I mean, they've been there for 40 years, what's, what's the hurry to get them out of there?
Yeah, my recommendation would be to remove the trees first. Do a survey, evaluate what you've got, and you could get a company in that maybe specializes in tree removal with no overhead from a contractor that's doing ditch cleaning. So, so yeah, you could easily do that, we did that on JD 36 recently.
It just won't be as abrupt, you know, it'd be more of a, but, number of the only questions I had at this point.
All right. Any other questions? Have anything else, Chuck?
Nope.
All right. Thank you for your report, Chuck, at this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this hearing meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute timeline. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning, lets you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or are not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch 26? Is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch 26? And for the last time, is there anyone willing, wishing to make comments on County Ditch 26? Hearing no further comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any further questions or comments from the board?
No questions from me, I would move to accept the findings in order, um, that the petition for abandonment for CD 26 be denied.
Got a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same. Thank you very much. Are we done with this now?
Yes.
All right, concludes the public hearing for County Ditch 26. All right. County Ditch 56, good morning, and our hearing today is the preliminary hearing on the proposed improvement to County Ditch 56, Branch 22. The purpose of the hearing is to consider the petition for the drainage project with all matters pertaining to the preliminary survey report. We will now have the drainage staff go over the judicial documents. Craig?
Start with the memo and the background here. Uh, the Blue Earth County Ditch 56 watershed is more than 8,500 acres in size in, in Garden and Lincoln Townships of Blue Earth County. We received a petition for improvement on August 22nd, 2022. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority appointed Charles J. Brandl to make a preliminary survey report on September 13th, 2022. Mr. Brandl submitted his preliminary survey report to the Property and Environmental Resources Department on February 8th, 2023. Uh, today, this hearing is not the final approval of the project. The board will be determining if the engineer should proceed to prepare a detailed survey report and appoint viewers to, to determine benefits and damages. Uh, the jurisdictional documents, the hearing notice was mailed to landowners on May 26, 2023. The hearing notice was posted at the Mankato Free Press on May 30th, 2023. Hearing notice was posted at the courthouse. Regarding the DNR report, we did not receive any reports from the DNR. DNR, we sent the documentation, the engineers report for them for the review on February 8th, 2023. So they've been looking, had it four and a half months now to look at it, we haven't received any comment. Uh, Chuck apparently has been having conversations, so I'll let Chuck refer to talk about that and what kind of conversations we've had with DNR, uh, recently on that, as part of his report. So that's it for jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Greg, can I get a motion and a second to accept the affidavits into legal record?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Will now hear from the engineer.
All right, good morning again, Chuck and Jacob again, uh, for Branch 22 of CD 56. Uh, like Craig stated, we're at the preliminary hearing. The main goals of the preliminary hearing are to look at the costs, um, get feedback from landowners, look at, to see if the outlet's adequate, and is the project feasible, practical, to move on to the next step. It's a mid-step, but the engineer has to do a, a lot of work to kinda get to that. We have a prelim, preliminary plan and a model of the system. So just looking at the existing, um, system, um, by watershed, we have 9,300 acres that drain into this area, I think benefits are a little less than 9,000, fairly flat area. Uh, CD 56 has had a lot of history, there's been a lot of branches that have been replaced, repaired. Uh, the ditch gets cleaned every, um, eight years. Uh, there was just a project to clean out the delta of CD 56 in City Lake Crystal. Uh, Branch 22 is a small branch, yeah, in the system, it's constructed in 1920, and there's been really no work to that, that we have a record of, but when we televised it, we did find that there has been some work that has been done to the system. Go ahead, Jacob.
Yeah. So, as Chuck was discussing, um, the full red outline is the full CD 56 watershed. If you can see the small purple outline near the center of the watershed is the branch-
If you can see the small purple outline near the center of the watershed is the Branch 22 watershed. It's around 200 acres, so about a little over 2% of the CD 56 watershed, but represents a relatively small portion. Looking a little bit closer at the Branch 22 watershed, we can see kind of the area that it outlines. It's a relatively simple branch and lateral. The Branch 22 lateral starts at the open ditch as a 15-inch tile and next down to an 8-inch at its end. Prior to that, there's Branch 22 lateral D1 that branches off to the south, which is an 8-inch tile. The elevation is something to look at here, white being the high points and blue and green being below. It's a relatively isolated basin, very, very flat, combined with the sandy soils produces a somewhat unique environment here.
The open ditch spoils are higher than any land in the branch watershed, so there's really no overland outlet, it all has to go through the tile where other systems have an overland outlet.
Yep. So, two measures were completed to get an idea of what the existing condition of this system were like and how it compares to the original construction documents. One of which was tile investigation where the tile was physically exposed by an excavator, and we got some images that kind of detail the existing condition of that. You can see there's some existing concrete tile as well as some single wall plastic tile that are present. Following that, in November of 2021, ISG completed a televising of the system, and from that, we were able to see how the system was really functioning. You can see here, there's patches of single wall which are not typically acceptable in public system tile, and where the old tile is in place, there's misalignments and generally a very high level of sediment accumulation, which would indicate that there's not a lot of flow passing through this, it's not functioning as initially intended.
This repair is about to fail right here, that's buckling in the tile.
Yeah, so in general, we have capacities listed here, but the tile is not functioning anywhere near that. But in general, the tile starts at that 15-inch for a very, very short segment, and it's one of the few spots that is seen as an adequate drainage capacity. Typically, we shoot for a half inch per day, that's NRCS standard, but as you can see here, very shortly after that, we go all the way down to a .08, so about 16% of recommended value, and in conjunction with that, the failing tile is reducing that even further.
One other thing to note, portions of the tile only have three feet of cover on them, so that's part of the reason they're failing, is they, they're not very deep in the ground.
So with any proposed improvement, we look at a few things that kind of drive design. On top of that, with the existing conditions, we look at that as well. The first of which being, we want to see a minimum of five feet of cover over any of our designed tile. That assists, the two things, reduces pressure from farming equipment that would collapse the tile, as well as provides an adequate deep outlet for landowners' private tile to come in and tie in. The second being, I discussed that previously, but a half inch per day drainage coefficient is the standard we shoot for in proposed tile. And then thirdly, an adequate outlet, we want to make sure that downstream drainage infrastructure has the capacity to adequately handle what we are proposing. And finally, any alternative BMEs that could be implemented as a portion of the project. A little look here into the proposed project, nothing too major is changing, we are following the same general alignment for both the Branch 22 and the lateral D1. Tile is getting upsized along the Branch 22 where we were starting with a 15-inch in the existing condition, we're starting with an 18-inch and generally flattening tile to gain depth, produce a more efficient system that should last longer than the existing.
We looked at a repair versus an improvement, really the only way to gain depth was to go the improvement route, so that's what landowners decided to move forward with.
Yeah, and you can see here in the, in the capacities table that in general, we're achieving about half inch per day drainage coefficient, with the exception of lateral D where it's very closely matching the existing tile capacity.
Really, that's the minimum size we put in.
Yep. So moving forward, we can see plan and profiles here, this is the furthest upstream extents of the Branch 22 system. It's a little hard to see on, on the monitor, but currently, there's only about three feet of cover, as we discussed. We, we propose to flatten out the entire tile to gain depth and have adequate cover there.
And get to five feet.
So, looking a little bit at cost, another reason that improvement was looked at here is that there's not a tremendous jump in cost to do an improvement as opposed to a repair. To repair this system back to the initial constructed condition would be a little over $250,000, and to approve it would be over a little, a little over $280,000. So a net cost there of about $28,000.
And that, as you saw by the pictures, the, the repair was going to have to happen either way, so, so this just makes sense to have something that'll last longer in the future.
Yep.
We did put together a model at per statute modeling the five, 10, 25, and 50-year events. Just looking at the difference with no overland overflow, there's definitely a difference, but not as significant as, as other systems. This is just the 10-year, which is about a four and a half inch rain. The green and light blue would be drowneded out. If the system was working, right now it's not working, and so we kind of get rid of tho, we get rid of those areas. The 50-year event, there's a little bit more drastic improvement of that. This is maybe hard to see, but maybe you can see it. When we look at aerial photos, this area is dark. It's usually wet saturated soil because the system's not working, and the areas around it are not. So definitely, you could, you could see it by the television, you could see by the aerial photos that the system hasn't been working very well. When we look at flow rates, we're asked specifically in working with the DNR to look at percentage of change. Percentage of changes are very high, even though we're just going from a 15 to an 18-inch tile. When you look at the actual amount of flow, it's only six to 12 CFS for the modeled events. When we look at the CD 56 system as a whole, its capacity is over 2,500 CFS. So our change in the adequacy of outlet, the percentage of the full open ditch is, at the 50-year event, is a half a percent. So when we look at the change, it's about .7%. So we looked at the structures downstream, they all have adequate capacity to handle this change. I mean, when you look at modeling, 1% to 2% is an acceptable error or potential to be off, and we're, we're under 1% increase on the open ditch. So essentially, by our opinion, the outlet is adequate and can handle it. There are other practices in the watershed that are going on. I'm skipping over construction practices, we did go over those with landowners. We, we have done a multi-purpose drainage management plan for the whole system. There was grant funding that was applied for back in 2016. There's currently some portions of the system that are going into, essentially the federal government's buying them, and there'll be some restorations. There's also areas that are going to be looked at through studies at the outlet and, and through Crystal Lake that potentially could have additional storage. Branch 22 just doesn't have any of those options, it's all one little area that's served by the tile. So it's, like Craig said, we did not get any DNR comments, and we'll gladly meet with them, and I'll request a meeting on this and other projects between now and the final report. We recommend approval of the project, it's cost-effective, practical, and the outlet is adequate for the change that we're proposing. So we recommend approving the PER and moving forward with the project. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your report Chuck. At this time, we'll be open to public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, and there is a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or they're not relevant to the matter under the consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch 56? Is there anyone willing, wishing to make comments on County Ditch 56? And for the last time, is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch 56? Hearing no further comments, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing. Are there any further questions or comments from the board?
Not at this point.
All right, can I get a motion in a second to accept the findings in order?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes. All right.
Thank you Chuck.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you Jacob.
All right, that concludes County Ditch 56 ditch hearing. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I just, I just want to point out and, don't leave Steve because I'm going to talk about you.
He doesn't care, he's good anyway.
No, no, that's fine.
He'll talk later.
It's good, and ditches is typically people, farmers or people involved in agriculture. When we set this hearing on our May 2nd board meeting, I don't think any of us knew we were going to have seven planning and zoning items on our agenda, including one that took 57 minutes and one that took 50 minutes each. So appreciate, and when we do that, we always talk about it, it comes out, it'll be at the nine o'clock board meeting, and typically, we try to do that at the beginning of the board meeting to make the best use of everybody's time. So those that, that came at nine o'clock and have hung out, I appreciate that because it had some unforeseen circumstances, just the agenda moved around a little bit, so, thank you for hanging in there with us.
Right. On the next part is on drainage, Craig, you got Judicial Ditch 33.
Well, we're looking at an additional review of the detailed survey report, this is a kind of a recommendation by our, our attorney, Kale Van Brugen. The purpose, Judicial Ditch 33 resides in Section 22, 23, 26, and 27 of McPearson Township. JD 33 is a public drainage system established in 1918 with an approximate watershed of 896 acres. The Drainage Authority received a petition for improvement to JD 33 on October 6th, 2021. As part of the petition process, the project engineer filed a detailed survey report on March 30th, 2023. During the review discussions with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, the department requested additional information pertaining to the project. Due to the requested additional information, the drainage management staff is recommending the Drainage Authority approve the findings in order, returning the detailed survey report to the project engineer for, for the review. Additionally, the Drainage Authority received a petition for an environmental assessment worksheet. The Blue Earth County Board as the responsible government unit will be required to take action regarding the EAW petition. Due to the requested additional information, the proposed project design is not complete, and as such, there is no project for the RGU to evaluate under the petition. Engineers for the proposed project have reported that the additional information reviewed by the Department of Natural Resources will yield an amendment to the final engineering report. Once a final engineering, engineering plan and amendment for the project is filed, the RGU will conduct its review and decide if they will proceed with a discretionary EAW as outlined in Minnesota Rules Part 41, 4410. Attorney Kale Van Brugen recommends the board approve the attached findings in order. The findings in order acknowledge that the EAW petition remains in effect and no action may be taken on the project for which the petition has been filed. The project engineers will continue to coordinate with the Department of Natural Resources and other interested parties to address concerns. This coordination will likely result in a design modifications to be incorporated into the final project design. It is the final, it is the final design with all the modifications incorporated that will be analyzed in considering the EAW petition.
So we have a motion to...
Basically have a findings order, ordering further review of the detailed survey report. It also acknowledges that there is an EAW out there, and we will, that'll be addressed once we receive the modified final report.
Okay.
That's, put it in, summarize it. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And that passes. All right. And we have 52.
This is a quick motion, County Ditch 52, motion for review and damages. County Ditch 52 is located in Sterling Township, and it is in the final stages of the improvement project process. During construction of the improvement, trees were removed from areas lying along the northwest quarter of the southwest quarter in Section 33 Sterling Township. We're asking the County Ditch Drainage, 52 Drainage Authority pass the motion below to direct viewer Ron Winquist to prepare it and file a report with the Drainage Authority for the damage associated with the removal of trees in the area described. The proposed motion provided by the Drainage Authority attorney is motion to direct viewer Ron Winquist to prepare and file a report with the Drainage Authority recommending an award of damages for trees removed by the Drainage Authority in the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 33 Sterling Township.
I would make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
And click the last item for ditches. This is on the appointment of a commissioner for the Joint Drainage, Joint Drainage Authority Board for Joint Ditch 11. As part of the Assembly of the Joint Drainage Authority for Joint Ditch 11, which includes Waseka, La Sure, and Blue Earth County Commissioners, the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners hereby appoints Commissioner Kip Brunder, District 5, to represent Blue Earth County as the Joint Drainage Authority Board Member for JD 11. So moved.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, that's a hard one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Congratulations, Kip.
Well, I was already on, we're just taking Kevin off.
We found some water in La Sure County, so we had to change Kevin for La Sure.
The catcher says they have to have one representative from every county, so.
So we'll be...
We went from two to one.
All right.
We just have a small piece of that.
And it looks like we're completed with ditches.
Thank you Craig.
Thank you Craig.
Thanks Chuck and Jacob. Hey Bill.
And we're going to jump right into Human Services. Phil, you can see what time it is?
I do.
Okay, thank you, just, just thought, just thought I'd let you know that.
Thanks Mark.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
That, that might have been a clue.
They might have given me some notes there, if I caught them, which I did.
All right.
Thank you much, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, it's good to see you today. I will try to move through fairly rapidly. The good news is all of our action items, Mr. Chair, are known to us, they're renewals. And so the first of those is Nicola County Psychiatric Services. We have a contract with Nicola County where they pay us quarterly $25,000 a year for backup psychiatric services for the seriously mentally ill in their county. The term is January 1st of '23 through December 31st of '23. Financial assistance, fraud prevention investigation, this is our welfare fraud investigation program. It is also a renewal at $110,000 per year, the term July 1st of '23 through June 30th of '25. And then supportive housing, we've partnered with Partners for Housing to have a employer of record contract for what's referred to as a community living infrastructure agreement for our housing. for our housing resource specialist. And that is a four-county project that are listed in the narrative. $126,000, which fully funds the staff position and some ancillary supports. Term July 1st of '23 through June 30th of '25. And finally, most of the board will be familiar with the semi-independent living skills. This is for the non-wavered, we talked about waiver clients. This is the non-wavered clients where we do have an ability to support them with providers in our community and there are several of those. So what we do is group them together and you'll see a 2% increase for both '23 and '24 proposed to you today with the rates included. And the term of July 1st of '23 through May 30th of '25. ALI, Dignity for Life, EON, HMC, Harry Meyer, HSI, and REM, PCS, and Smiles are the providers. And those are the recommendations I bring before you today.
All right. I'll move the board.
Second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, those pass.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Also informational discussion items are nothing brand new, just some report out about data. And I will move again rapidly through and if there are any questions, I'd be glad to address those from the board. Um, the first, starting with Mental Health Center Program data, you'll see admissions. There is some drop off at the end of the year and there is a note about a changeover in one particular prescriber that we had, so we did see a drop there. That will, I fully expect to bounce back here in the new data. Scheduled appointments is the next graph, fairly flat overall. And the shape, same with the no-show rate. We do track that and you'll see the average is a straight bar across, 25% no-show. So that's one in four not showing up. I mean, it's a hard business model. So we have purpose to make that a priority for this next year. At the very last of the narrative, you'll see that we're trying to come up with strategies. We do call people and prompt them and a lot of different strategies that we use. The next section is Public Health and again, familiar to the board, I hope. Child and teen checkup is kind of a battery of, of things we do for young, young folks up to age 20 with the clinics and we send out letters, we do outreach, outreach to families that need that. You'll see a drop off in outreach during two of the COVID years, but it bounced back now from the 2022 data. And then WIC, also a very flat picture between '21 and '22 with the data provided here. We are primarily still doing this work, reaching out to families that need nutrition support under age five and we can do that remotely. And I do think there will be a hybrid that'll go forward with regard to WIC where they'll be allowed to do some of that. Um, there is an increase in people choosing to come in in person and so that's, they do have that choice. First steps is our partnership, that's office out of Mankato Clinic, but also serves Mayo Clinic. And what we try to do is get the kids what they need as far as prenatal and postpartum services from their medical providers who we help as a communication link and coordinator. Um, in the first trimester, you'll see 64% engagement, which is a really good number. If you add the second and third trimesters, we're at 94% engagement by the third trimester. So it's, it's a good, good outcome measure for us. And then we get into the mid-choices, which you've heard a lot about. Our really assessment of both people under 65 who have a disability and over 65 because of their situation and vulnerability about medical services. So we can evaluate and assess all those, those individuals. Um, you'll see at the bottom of the QSO graph, '22 and '23, there was a sharp decline. That was the school sisters up on the hill that left the community. And you'll see we bounced right back, which, you know, it's a good thing from a service perspective, but our volume continues to, when we have any adjustment down, it always seems to go right back up, which is the case in this regard. And then Lynette has a couple of graphs that I must admit, the data is always confusing because the state dataset, which is the first graph, doesn't exactly match or add up with our numbers. So we provide both of those to the board just for full disclosure. There is some skew. Um, you'll see Lynette has a note about legacy assessments, which are paper assessments that are still done up to 300, so that's some of it that the track, that the state does not track. And then you'll see really a re-breakout of the same numbers for reassessments when people are reassessed on a schedule from our staff. And this again is under 65 now. And let's see, you'll see that there were some additions and subtractions in the reassessments over time. The assessments are still taking over 11 hours to complete, which as a previous clinician, that's a long time for an assessment. If I did a diagnostic assessment, it's usually a couple hours. And so I am always worried about just the amount of investment it takes. And the hard reality of this is when you're assessing somebody with a disability or over 65, things can change, I mean, in a day. And so that, that huge investment of time can be mitigated by circumstance in, you know, a minute. And things are different. So we, we do our best and they're trying to streamline some of that in the next iterations that are coming out. But we'll, we'll see about that. That's what I have for you today, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Good to see you all. Happy to see you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go right into administration.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board Minutes for Ditch 6.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second and the County Board Minutes, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, that passes.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion of second for to approve the bills from... And is there any discussion, I'm sorry? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 10 in your packet, is the Human Resources Department Agenda. We do have just informational items for the board today, starting with the number of positions that have been filled, including a mechanic slash field service technician in our public works area, a part-time correctional officer in the jail, and information security administrator in our IT department, as well as a business analyst, application developer in IT. One of those is a result of resignation of a business analyst and so we've, well, we're beginning recruitment to refill that particular position. These are the positions that were filled were previous resignations. So we've had quite a bit of turnover recently in our information technology department and hopefully these new hires will stick around for a while. Uh, then we had filled a position of our library technician, a part-time position in the library. And then we had a revised start date of a correctional officer to today. Lastly, we have initiated recruitment to refill a full-time correctional officer position. Happy to answer any questions that the board might have?
No.
All right, item number 11 in your packet is a memo regarding an on-sale liquor license request from Nine Mile Corner Vineyard LLC. They've submitted the required paperwork to apply for an on-sale liquor license. Uh, this will allow them to sell beer in accordance with the Blue Earth County Farm Winery Ordinance. This application has been reviewed by the county attorney and the sheriff and so we're recommending approval of this on-sale liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, passes.
Item number 12 in your packet is a memo and cooperative agreement outlining drug court agreement between Community Corrections and the State of Minnesota through the Fifth Judicial District. Uh, this particular agreement provides funding to support county staff that work with the drug court. Uh, the amount each year of this two-year agreement is $90,000. So recommending approval of this cooperative agreement.
I'll move it.
Second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, pass.
Item number 13 in your packet is a sentence to serve, joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Department of Corrections. This is a renewal of this agreement. Again, it provides some funding to our Community Corrections Department in the amount of $51,657.08 split up over a two-year period. So staff are recommending approval of this agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number 14 in your packet is information regarding a memorandum of agreement with Trellis for a supportive housing and shelter project. As you recall, a couple of weeks ago, staff from the city presented some information regarding this particular project. Uh, this is a, a partnership project with the City of Mankato and local nonprofits to build a facility, hopefully using some tax credit dollars. The county has allocated $2 million of ARP funds for this particular project. And so Trellis will be the developer of the project, assuming all the other funding is received. And so in order to submit those tax credit applications to the state, we need this memorandum of understanding as well as a letter of intent to support those tax credit applications. So staff are recommending approval of this MOU and letter of support.
I'll move that.
Second.
Got a motion of second, any discussion? Besides I, my point that we're always working on trying to get low-income housing and workplace housing more and more. This will also help some of the homeless around Mankato, I think it's a positive thing.
Uh, the shelter portion of this particular proposal will make sure that there's shelter resources available 24/7 for the whole year. So that will be an improvement in terms of working with our homeless population.
Very positive. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same, passes.
Item number 15 in your packet is the financial status report for May 31st of this year. Very quickly, you'll see the total revenues with the first half taxes now being received are at a little over 50 million compared to expenses through the end of May at 38.6 million. Uh, we continue to see some of our state and federal revenues lag behind a little bit, uh, which is of some concern to us. Uh, was talking with the Human Service Director last week who indicated some of their grants have not been processed as timely as they have in the past. And we are working with the State Department to try and understand the reasons for that a little better. But on the expense side, you know, we're just starting the road construction season, so the contracts and fees line is lagging behind the budget a little bit at this point, which is fairly typical, but we will continue to see that grow as the summer progresses. Um, some concern I would say is in the public assistance and personal services lines. Both are running a little bit above the budget at this point in time, kind of indicating both need at that public assistance level, but also the impact of our class and comp study and some of the increased pressure on wages here in the county. Under the Enterprise Fund, the Ponderosa landfill, you'll see total revenues are 1.3 million against just under 1.3 million in expenses. So as we continue to take over, make some improvements, have some cell improvements, that budget is impacted by those items. The second page then includes some of our cash and investment balances. You'll see the totals there. We're kind of at the high point of our cash, so our available funds are slightly above our six-month operating needs at this point in the year. I'll maybe end there, but certainly can answer any questions that the board might have.
Any questions on the finance?
No.
All strong. Well, thank you very much. It looks like we're going to jump right into the Commissioner reports. And I think Commissioner O'Connor, I think I'll start with you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Since our last board meeting, we all attended the AMC District Meeting, which was good. And that is all I had.
That's easy enough.
Mine was real light.
All right, Kevin.
Since our June 6th board meeting that afternoon, we had a JD 1 hearing as well as the CASA 11 open house, District 7's already been mentioned. On the 8th, I was at AMC Drainage Work Group as well as Blue Earth County SWCD meeting. And then on the 15th, we had a University of Minnesota Extension Committee meeting. And that completes my report.
All right. Kip.
Uh, mine too is relatively short. I had a few ditch things going on and then the big thing I was going to give a big update on was planning and zoning, but y'all got to see that right away this morning. So I'm gonna give you an update on that, but that was my exciting meeting for the week. That was, I think we, we did pretty good today because we started at 6:30 and got done at 10:30, I believe. So, you know, this is a little shorter, but.
Sound good.
Seen a lot of people.
All right, since our last meeting, I had a NACO membership meeting in the afternoon. On Wednesday, we had our District 7 meeting. On Thursday, the 8th, I had a TDS Personnel Committee meeting. We're discussing, uh, well, how we're going to go about to hire a new director for TDS. Um, on Monday, the 12th, I had a TDS Arts and Cultural Heritage Fund meeting. On Tuesday, I had a Policy Committee meeting for TDS. TDS kind of took over a lot of stuff for me this last couple of weeks. On Thursday, we had our TDS Board meeting. And then that afternoon, I had a NACO RAC, World Action Caucus meeting. And yesterday was Juneteenth, and that's the end of my report. And unless you have anything else, Bob?
I'm going to wrap this thing and say thank you very much. I thought we had a pretty good meeting.
Love to recess.
I'll second that.